Okay, let's start. Have a seat. Welcome. Let's call the meeting to order. City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Members, Chris.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Marcus.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman, Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman, Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, the invocation is with Father Duchamp. Is that right? Did I pronounce it right? From Father Sierra Parish.
In the name of the Father, and in the Son, and in the Holy Spirit. Father, you give it all peoples one common origin, and your will is to gather them as one family in yourself. Fill the hearts of all people with the fire of your love, and the desire to ensure justice for all their sisters and brothers. By sharing the good things you give us, may we secure justice and equality for every human being, and end to all division, and a human society built on love and peace. I ask you, Stu, our Lord Jesus Christ, to your son, to those remains with you and the Holy Spirit, one God forever.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Vice Mayor, Smith, you want to do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, do we have Miss Eastside here? Is she here? Push up. There you are. Come on down. If I'd have known you were here, you could have done the Pledge of Allegiance.
How about if we continue then?
On behalf of the city, we want to thank you for your, all the time and energy and effort you've been putting into this job, and we have a certificate of recognition for you. This is Katie Kyle, Miss Eastside, for 2009, right? Ten. We need a new one. Okay. Well, guess what? You get two now. The Athlete of the Month is Connor Cherlin. Is Connor here? I'm so glad you're here. I hate standing up here alone. Connor is a four-year starting setter for the Quartzhill volleyball team. He led the Rebels to four consecutive undefeated Golden League Championships. Connor was named First Team All-Golden League the past three seasons, and this season was named Golden League MVP and the Valley Press Player of the Year. Connor was First Team All-CIF in 2008, was named Most Valuable Player of the prestigious Crescenta Valley Tournament in 2008 and 2009. Connor led Quartzhill to at least the CIF quarterfinals the past four seasons, winning the CIF championship in 2008. Connor holds the Golden League record for the most assists in a career, and the Quartzhill record for the most playoff games in any sport. It's sixteen? What's that?
Yeah, with sixteen games.
With sixteen games?
Yeah.
Okay. My son was a setter, so I should know these things. But he didn't get this stuff. Connor holds the Golden League record for the, oh, I got that. Connor was valedictorian for Quartzhill High, maintaining over a 4-0 average during each semester of high school. He participated in the International Baccalaureate Program, which requires a balance between academic service and athletics, and a huge number of hours. I mean, you guys worked 200 hours of service, creativity, and action, but the study. I mean, these guys study, and study, and study. I don't know how you are an athlete, too. And then this is the best part. He is attending the University of California, Santa Barbara, my alma mater, and will be studying biology and math. Connor was treasurer of the Key Club, volunteers with the Valley Bible Church, enjoys wakeboarding and playing the ukulele. Do they always laugh when?
I've never said that publicly before, so. I was wondering what kind of response I would get.
Well, now you know.
Apparently, it's a joke.
For his outstanding accomplishments in athletics, academics, and in the community, I'd like to present Connor Cherlin with the Mayor's Athlete of the Month Award. And because you're going to Santa Barbara, we'll also throw in a $1,000 scholarship because you were smart enough to select UCSB.
Thank you.
And now, the Vice Mayor is going to present the Art Award to one of my old professors, Rich Sims. Well, one of my professors.
Well, actually, I gotta be. And I remember it to this day.
There's always a chance of changing.
Yeah. If only you had known, you know?
Yeah, we have to honor the day to have, you know, not only a colleague, but somebody that I consider important. I mean, personally, I'm not entirely, you know, a guy that talks about dating and service and everything, but he was. And he's been, well, the only last professor that's ever called in and studied these systems. And it wasn't rich, a lot of computer stuff we have there, especially, we talked about, he was a photographer in the army, and he got out to build, and he still has it. The same one that he built after he, you know, saw, you know, some of these, one of these fine, rich and, you know, great contributions to this, to the arts, spreading it and teaching some of these students. And my son, actually, is one of his students, and I just showed, I'm not sure, one of those pieces that I sent to students recently, and Rob, so, vice versa. But, so, forty years now, Rich, in 1967, he was in the faculty at the College of the Art and Culture. He was responsible for designing the art form, the deaf and blind classes, and student students. He still needs today. In the early seventies, Rich developed the first surrounding classes off at college, as well as a video class, and one of the first in Southern California. In 1980, he brought the use of computers. Rich developed one of the first art classes in America using math and computers to help design. And we still have, our students have computers, we have computers to view, or actually, we see paper, and so, students can check things. He presented with a solid resume to the world in 1983. The third captain received this honor decision. It was the word petition development, new opportunities at college. First traveled to China, where he was one of the first to use computers to create detail on to his own surroundings. He then had his staff in hand, to examine on the instrument, firing power. He had quite few problems with this time. Almost wrote poems for the heart, and he did, he painted surround. I told you, you heard my gene. Christians, and then, he finished off a tradition, a contribution to the dance, which of art and culture, and then, the creation of time, skill, novel, motion, that's surround. So, we have to see Lancaster, who, the Lewis D Museum, particularly, as well.
And we've been, both of us together, always active in the valley, in the arts. One of, you know, when I found out about this award, and I, of course, I, yeah, maybe I felt guilty about that B, I don't know. But, you know, Rex is, you may not know this, but he's a visionary in my thought. Because him and his brother, I believe it was Rob, right? Yes. You know, they kind of ran the college when they were there. We needed video equipment desperately. I think I was probably one of the very first in America, and certainly in California, the early seventies. Most people didn't know what the word "video" meant. And I was doing this at home, and Ginny and I was involved, where, if you look on the Internet, we're one of the pioneers of early video art. So, and I got a nice grant from the college to study under a very famous person at Berkeley. So, I was up there for about six weeks, on one-to-one, what else could you ask? But anyway, we desperately needed this equipment at the college, and it was, I remember, $3,600 for editing video. And thanks to Rex, he made this happen. It was fascinating how this happened, because, you know, he was running for the office. What office was it? Student Council President, I think?
Actually, Rob was running for the ASB President, and I was behind the scenes, but...
But anyway, I contacted them, and I said, "Sure, I'll talk up the votes," you know, when, you know. So, I always talked after class, because most of the money had gone to athletics, almost all. And in my mind, it was 99%. And so, I don't know what the actual number was, but pretty high, the student money was given. And it was Rex understood what I was doing, and he had the vision enough to support us. And we got the $3,600, and I started teaching one of the very first video classes in California at the college. So, anyway, I want to give Rex a big thank you. It really made a difference in my life, and especially while we're there, the students.
Thank you, Rex.
Thank you, Rich. All Speaker? Oh, no, we have the United Way with Barbara Boswell. You put it in green, and so I just went right by it.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. It's my pleasure to tell you what a great United Way campaign we had here at the city this year. During the month of May was our United Way Giving Campaign, which is time we ask employees to support United Way and the various programs that they put on in our community. We had various events that helped to raise money, including a bake sale, where we raised over $700, which is unbelievable for a bake sale. Our city employees really stepped up. Last year, our United Way Campaign, we raised just over $18,000. And this year, we were hoping to achieve that much. We had fewer employees, and times are harder. And when we got close to 18,000, we thought, "Well, maybe we'll get 20,000. Well, maybe we'll get 25." This year, we raised over $32,000, which is just an incredible increase over last year, and actually, I think is the most we've ever raised in the history of the city for United Way. And this is really during a time when our citizens, our community, needs it the most. You know, where we have high unemployment, where people are really struggling, and our employees really open their hearts and their pocketbooks to help our community. We didn't do it alone. We had community business partners who gave donations and helped to make our event a success. I think we had over, almost 40 businesses that contributed to our campaign. I'm standing before you, representing really a committee and a committee who worked hard, and without them, we would not have been successful. So, I'm going to ask those that are here to stand up. They really put their heart and soul into making it a success, and have really raised the bar for next year. So, we'll see how it goes. So, thanks to them. I'm very proud of the success of the campaign. I hope that you are as proud as I am, because, you know, employees really did give as much as they could. And United Way will be able to do some really great programs this year for our citizens.
And I'd like to add, because Barbara won't, during the time when Barbara was in charge of doing the budget, she also took this task on for United Way, and this group of employees, and Barbara did an outstanding job. Over the last 15 years, the city employees have donated $350,000 to United Way. That's more than most, if not all, of the groups in the Antelope Valley.
Thank you very much. All Speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on a non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. Any agenda items to be removed?
No, sir.
Mayor, Paris, can we pull RCC one off of the consent calendar? I'll need to abstain, given I was not present at the last meeting.
Okay. Okay, let's go with RCC two. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt RCC two.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous, moving on to RCC one.
Move to adopt RCC one.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous with Ken Mann abstaining. Any items on the council consent calendar we need to pull?
Yes, we have speaker cards for CC four.
And we need to pull CC two.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion for the remaining items?
I'll move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Let's go to CC four, and we'll start with Jason Zink.
Hello, Council Mayor. Just, my problems with CC four is it's the way it appears on the agenda. I like more transparency from my government, and just by stating ordinance number 944, nobody walking in this public hall has no idea what that ordinance is. So, I would like the city to go ahead and summarize more on the agenda. You know, it could be said that this is a conspiracy, it's laziness, or disrespect for the public, but, of course, the ordinance is...
I didn't know what it was either, but now I do, so.
Right. But I see Palmville doing it, too, and it's just, we need to know, as public.
I agree.
And as far as, it is for a deputy mayor, and I agree with it. If I was mayor, I'd probably have five of them to keep up with what I think, there's really an opportunity right now for the Antelope Valley to exceed and bring economic growth out here. The only thing is, is it going to be employee of the city, but paid by you? That was the only question. So, would they be, the obvious question is, if they got hurt doing something on behalf of yourself, would the people, would the city be liable? That's the only question.
I think the city's workers' comp would come into play, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's an appointee of the council, and yes, it would.
Just like any other commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to state that I don't have any outright opposition to having a deputy mayor, per se, someone that you feel is necessary to attend the variety of social events, be a sort of ambassador, if you will, or envoy to...
I want to be clear on that. I want to be clear on that. She will not be attending any social events.
Okay.
I mean, it's a working position.
Right. Where she's a delegate in your direction to attend different events, and meet with people where you're unable to, or where it would be best served by this other person. Is that correct?
Well, she's primarily going to be working on the China relationship, and she has been working on it. She's attended every meeting I've had with BYD. She went to China with me, and that'll be her primary responsibility.
Okay. Two points there, then, is, first off, why is it a deputy mayor and not simply something like an ambassador or delegate to the Chinese? Or also, what is the problem with any of the other members of the council taking on that role or that responsibility?
You know, I've been asking them, and asking them to learn Chinese, and they just haven't complied.
There are translators available for that.
I don't know it, Rex. I don't know Chinese.
That's my outright opposition. Secondly, to it, is also, should there come a time when you choose to leave office, or when you're unable to be there? As the ordinance says, it'll continue to be paid by ordinance, which was briefly addressed lately. It sunsets when he leaves.
The position goes with me. When I leave, it goes with me.
Gotcha. Okay. That was it.
Thank you.
In reading over this ordinance, it says, "Compensation of the deputy mayor shall be set by ordinance, and from time to time may be changed by ordinance, provided such compensation shall not exceed the amount determined in accordance with the general laws by the state for city council members." That, to me, has the appearance of the city council members, or she will be paid by the city and not by you. So, I'd like to have that answered, please. It's on the agenda, so you have to answer the question.
The day I have to answer questions is the day we're going to change the way we govern the city.
Okay, thank you.
If you want to have a meeting with me, I'll be happy to answer any of your questions at that time. Okay. Is that all the speaker cards?
For this item, yes.
Okay.
Mayor Paris? I just wanted to, I know the gentleman, Mr. Barti, I had some of the same questions, and I did take the time to talk to Mayor Paris about it this past week. And by his intents, what I've understood is that Ms., I can't say her last name, Kitty, she won't mind if I call her Kitty. But what I'm understanding is she's basically going to be like a Chinese ambassador, and if you do some of the research on the deputy, exactly what Mayor Paris wants to do is to have an extension of himself, and an ombudsman is really a deputy. And that also, Mr., Mayor Paris has said that he's going to pay for any of expenses, and also, it sunsets when his term is over. So, I, at this point, have had all my questions and concerns addressed, and I'm all for it.
Anyone else? For the rest of you, that's the plan. I don't anticipate her receiving any city funds. And, you know, if once I leave, the city decides they like that program and want to continue it, it would require another ordinance. Is that correct? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt ordinance number 944.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's vote. And it's unanimous. Let's move on to CC item number two.
Move we adopt CC one. Was it CC?
CC two.
I'm sorry. CC two.
You have to recuse, or are you just...
Just going to abstain.
Because he wasn't present.
Oh, I see.
I move to adopt CC two.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Before I move on, where did Mark go? Now, is it the next meeting that we actually appoint Kitty, or?
Nominate and can appoint tonight. It will become effective in 30 days, once the ordinance becomes effective.
Okay, do we have that on?
CA one.
CA one.
CA one, okay, good. So, we've already done that?
No. You will.
Why am I missing this?
Council of CC one. CA one's towards the left.
And is there, is there any reason she can't be the acting deputy mayor until that time? Because we have that meeting with the Chinese next week.
Well, she's going to that, working with us in the same capacity with that title that she's been throughout. So, de facto, yes. But she will be with staff.
Okay, I just want all the council to know that that's what we're doing. All right. Public hearing item number one. Any cards?
No cards.
You want to waive the reading?
Yes. No objection.
No objection? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to adopt resolution number 1038.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Public hearing item number two, any cards?
No cards, or?
Let's waive the public reading.
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 1039.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Public hearing item number three, any cards?
No cards.
Let's waive the reading. Is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt resolution number 1040.
Can we assume that I've opened the public hearing and closed the public hearing on each of these?
Yes.
Thank you. Same for item number four. Mr. Neal, you really skated tonight, you know that. You had a very busy night, I see. Okay, any cards?
No. Open up the public hearing.
Open it. Let's open the hearing, let's close the hearing, and is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 10-41.
I'll second.
It's unanimous. Moving on to public hearing item number five. I think we do have some cards on that, right?
Yeah, we have one.
And this is an appeal from the Planning Commission, denial of a conditional use permit.
Mayor Paris, members of the city council, the item before you is an appeal of a Planning Commission denial of conditional use permit, number 10-04. That is a request for a type 21 alcohol license for off-sale general sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The site of the request is an existing mini-market with gasoline sales located at the southwest corner of 10th Street West and Avenue H. The city's current alcohol ordinance was adopted approximately two and a half years ago. The city council, in adopting that ordinance, distinguished between what are known as primary alcohol sellers and incidental alcohol sellers. Mini-markets in the ordinance are defined as a primary alcohol seller, and as such, are required to maintain a separation distance between their site and any kind of identified sensitive use. In this particular case, one of those sensitive uses is residential property and residential dwelling units. As you can see on the map, this particular site is located adjacent to residential uses on three sides, to the west, south, and east. The Planning Commission, in hearing this case, was requested to grant a waiver to those distance requirements. A waiver provision is allowed under the ordinance, provided that certain findings are met. And those findings, as they are identified in the ordinance, are that, number one, the alcohol beverage establishment will serve a specific community need, and number two, that the waiver of the normal distance requirement is not expected to result in an adverse effect on adjacent property, uses, or residents. In reviewing this particular case, staff looked at the fact that residential uses are located in proximity to three sides. We also looked at the issue of whether allowing the alcohol sales would bring a specific, or meet a specific community need in that area. From staff's perspective, the fact that the mini-market and gas station is already operating did not seem to bring into play another use, or a use that is of particular need to the community as a whole. Further, we did not believe that there was sufficient evidence that the waiver of the alcohol distance requirements would, in fact, not result in potential hardship or adverse effect to the nearby residents. We have noted that at establishments of this type, there have been occasions where there are problems with noise, traffic, and other types of things associated with the sale of those alcoholic beverages. The Planning Commission, in considering this information, reached the same conclusion, and in fact, voted unanimously to deny the request for the waiver and the request for alcohol sales at this location. The applicant has obviously appealed that request. It is in front of the city council now to really consider whether or not the granting of a waiver is an appropriate... is an appropriate request in this case. As I've indicated to you, staff's original recommendation and continuing recommendation is that it is not an appropriate waiver provision. Also present for you, if you have questions regarding the Planning Commission's decision-making process on this, is Mr. Jim Vos, who is the chairman of the Planning Commission, and he would be present to answer questions for you if you should so desire. To summarize, we believe that you should deny the applicant's appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision.
What was the vote in the Planning Commission?
I believe it was a unanimous vote, 7-0.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Any questions on Mr. Vos?
I have one question. I was informed that during the original CUP process, is it true that the applicant had stated on the record that he promised the citizens that there would not be any alcohol sold at this?
He did make that statement.
The person's name that said that, do we have that?
It's Mr. Mike Cohen, who is the applicant.
Well, I'm confused then.
Well, it was just brought up to me this afternoon, before I came to the council meeting, that, and I verified it, that during the CUP process originally, to get the CUP through, Mr. Cohen had promised the commission and the council. What was the year of this?
I believe the original approval of the conditional use permit to allow the development of the site was in about March or April of 2008.
Right. So, during that hearing, he had promised the citizens that he would not sell alcohol at that facility?
Also, what he wants to do is change that?
Yes. Yes, this is a subsequent request. And I think you could address the question to him as to why.
Could be a good question. I was sitting on the Planning Commission, and also, at the time we drafted the ordinance, I believe I was the chairman as well. That'd be a good question.
Isn't this the problem they're having in Los Angeles with alcohol distribut... You know, I mean liquor stores in neighborhoods?
Yes, there certainly have been problems within portions of Los Angeles over what kinds of facilities are available and so forth in portions of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Can you talk about the perennial loop on Avenue H and L, why those streets and the overpasses were put in?
Yes, in general, I can. Back, if you look back at the city's original general plan adopted in 1980, one of the concepts included in that was the idea of creating a wider system of streets around the periphery of the main developed area of the city, with the idea that traffic that doesn't have a destination to or from the central urban core could loop around. And one of the streets designated for that on the north end of town is Avenue H. So, the intent of Avenue H is that it's primarily a traffic carrier, rather than providing a lot of localized access to businesses or residences along it. So, NH has been developed to that level, and, of course, the overpasses that the city has built are on that peripheral loop system, one at H, one at L.
My understanding is, it's to keep the traffic from going through town?
Yes, traffic that really is not got a destination somewhere in the middle of the urban core. In other words, if you're trying to go from the east side to the west side, the idea was that the peripheral loop would provide you a quicker route, rather than going through the more congested center.
So, if an individual was using this and stopped in to get some gasoline loaf of bread and wanted a six-pack of beer, we're forcing them to go into town now?
Well, true. Without the approval of the conditional use permit, they couldn't buy alcohol at this location.
And a type 21, is that...
Beer, wine, and spirits, general off-sale.
So, it's a liquor store?
Yes.
I mean, it's not beer and wine, it's a liquor store?
It's beer, wine, and spirits, yes.
I mean, do they have an ABC license?
Not at this point, no. ABC will not issue them one without the city's approval of the CUP.
Thank you. Did the applicant want to address this?
Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Smith, council members, thank you for the opportunity. First of all, I would like to thank the city staff and the Planning Commission for going through the process to review our application. And we followed the procedure and filed for the appeal today. So, I want to thank you for your time. Two years ago, I stood in front of the Planning Commission, and during the presentation, I was asked whether we planned to sell alcohol. At that time, I said, "No, we do not plan to sell alcohol." I stood by that when we opened the business. But last time, when I presented the application to the Planning Commission, I did mention that we had some changes in economic situations that came up. However, what I'm requesting today is for you to continue this, give us a continuance of this hearing. During the time that we opened, which was in January, until now, we've been requested from neighbors and our customers to sell alcohol. And we do have, we believe we do have support from the neighborhood and from our customers. We can solicit that support, and if you would allow us some continuance, and if you think that support can be advantageous for... We can present those support to the hearing next time. We'll appreciate that.
I have a question. The type 21 alcohol, are you willing to go to a different type, where it's just beer and wine, and not spirits?
Yes, most of the request was for beer and wine, and we are willing to go to in that direction.
And you did tell the Planning Commission and staff that you weren't going to sell alcohol? So, what's changed?
No, this did not come up. There was no differentiation between the type of liquor that would be sold.
No, no. What he's asking you is back when you initially got approval from the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm sorry, what, can you repeat the question?
I just want to know, did you, in fact, tell the Planning Commission that you wouldn't sell alcohol? And if you did, what has changed?
At that time, I really... I don't know if I should blame my memory. I don't remember if I promised, but that question was raised, and I did answer that we do not plan to sell alcohol. And at that time, there was a statement made by a city official that we do have... In response to the citizen that asked the question, a city staff member suggested that we do have the legal right, if we decide to apply for liquor in the future, we can do that. So, what changed? It's mainly, since we opened in January, we've had significant inquiry from customers asking for beer and wine mainly. And we decided to apply.
Okay.
If I might add, you know, I'm sitting as, I think I sit, actually was the chairman. I don't remember the application, and maybe Brian correct me. The application, the CUP, wasn't made for a request for alcohol. So, I know that, just the thoughts or feelings, was it was really a no-brainer for me to approve the CUP, given that they didn't make the request. But I don't also remember any homeowners or anybody voicing any kind of objections either. And I'm not talking about the Planning Commission as of late, but I'm talking two years ago, or two and a half years ago.
Councilman Mann, I did, when Mr. Cohen originally made this application for this conditional use permit for alcohol, I did go back and look at the minutes of that meeting. The statement is in those minutes that he made. Further, there were, I believe, two residents that requested clarification about whether that original conditional use permit included the sale of alcohol, and they were told that it did not. But there was no indication in the minutes of their opposition to alcohol. They simply requested whether or not he was planning to sell it as a part of that conditional use permit.
That's what I remember.
You know, I don't want to get hung up on what people remember. I mean, what was significant to you is not going to be what's significant to the planning staff two years ago. I mean, I don't think that's necessarily relevant, what was said two years ago. What is relevant to me is, is this a good idea, or is it a bad idea? And, you know, what I'm seeing, I mean, I could probably articulate the reasons why we don't want alcohol in neighborhoods, but I'm not seeing that. I mean, I'm not seeing a summary of the reasons why this is a bad idea. And I think that we should be seeing that more often. You know, what is the rationale? What is the reasoning? What is the analysis that goes behind, rather than it's just a rule? Am I being clear?
I understand what you're saying. I think both the Planning Commission staff basically looked to uphold it and looked and see if the waiver that was put in there, if there was a reason to come with the waiver. And as Brian said, we couldn't come up with a reason for that. They did not attack it from, "Why is it a bad idea in a neighborhood?" We could certainly summarize it on appeals in the future.
I mean, I think my feelings about alcohol in general are pretty well-known. I mean, I'm not a big proponent of yours in that regard. But what I am a proponent of is, you know, I don't care if it's just a rule. There may be a very good reason why we need to change the rule, and there may be a very good reason why we shouldn't change the rule. And I think we could just do better in providing counsel with that analysis. Okay? Also, I wanted to tell you, Mr. Cohen, as the staff tells me, that you're wonderful to work with.
Thank you, sir. Likewise, that's what we feel towards the staff. They've been incredible, and if I could name names, it would take me all night.
Okay, good. Okay, any other questions?
Well, I have a comment too. It's, I agree with that, is that, you know, we went through and we crafted an alcohol ordinance, but that doesn't mean it's set in stone for the council. I think the Planning Commission did their job, because their job is to look at the ordinance and the general plan, and does it fit? And they adopted that. That's why there's an appeal process, so we can say, "Well, in this case, it doesn't fit." You know, I'm always, always very reluctant to look at controlling people's behavior. Government is always trying to control everybody's lives, business, personal lives. I mean, these houses, maybe the guy over there that's two blocks down wants to walk to the corner store and buy a bottle of wine for dinner. Why does he have to drive down to the grocery store? So, the reasons that we, and Mr. Mann and I did a lot of this on the Planning Commission, is that we took some CUPs and said, "Look, what are we trying to control? We're trying to control the guy that buys the quart bottle of malt liquor, puts it in a paper bag, and sits on the corner and drinks it, and then urinates in the, you know, harasses citizens." That's what we're trying to control. And so, we've made restricted...
Is it the bottle? Is it the bag? Is it the...
It's actually the paper bag, it's plastic. It's the singles, correct? Yeah, the singles. So, there was a time that we actually went through, and there was one CUP, and we said, "You can't have singles. You can only have..." I mean, the only singles you could have is maybe a chimay that costs 15 bucks or something like that. But I'd get all those little, you know, little drinks that they try to get to kids.
Fashion drinks or whatever, right.
The ripple and the other things like that. But the thing that bothers, and that's when, coming into this meeting, that's what I felt, except when I found out that it was said to the citizens, you know, to get a CUP passed, and there's other reasons that people don't want a gas station or something close, or a mini-market by their house. And so, to convince the citizens that, "Hey, government's got to do it, but we're not going to let them, you know, they're not going to sell alcohol." And then to go back and then change it, I'd like to see what the citizens, and I think Marv was, or Mr. Cohen was suggesting, maybe we do a 90-day ordinance? And Brian, what would be a reasonable distance? Would it be a tenth of a mile or whatever in a circumference that you would poll the citizens and say, "Hey, are you comfortable this?" Just like we do, we send out postcards before a CUP even goes to...
Correct.
Yeah.
500 feet.
And then, I mean, if you have two-thirds of the citizens saying, "Hey, we're good with it. We don't want to have to drive down the street. We like the way it is." Then that gives us a, you know, we can go back and say, "Hey, this is what was said now. There's new people living here. There's a new economic downturn. Let's look at it with new eyes." But I couldn't feel that I could give it to you tonight unless we had that information, because of what was said previously. I would agree with that, Ron. As long as we change the type of alcohol license, the spirit one is a no, at least as far as I'm concerned, and singles are a no.
Yeah, no singles, no malt liquor, things like that.
So, I mean, if it becomes a convenience, that's one thing. If it becomes a problem, that's another.
Are we talking beer and wine here, or are we talking...
Yeah, just beer and wine.
Just beer and wine.
And not singles, not malt liquor, not the ripple and the one that they put together with the fruit juice and just pure alcohol kind of stuff?
Correct.
Right.
The other thing I think, too, is you have to realize, and now that I look back, obviously, again, it was a no-brainer for me as, on a, sitting on the Planning Commission. But this is the peripheral loop. And as we get city build-out, there's a particular way we want traffic to flow. That's the reason why it's designed. So, my preference is, you know, the question needs to be asked, too. Are we trying to encourage people, and maybe not today, but let's say 10 years from now, are we trying to turn them back down 10th Street West and run it back towards Avenue I? And again, this is the major street that people will use eventually to leave town? You know, they say they're going on vacation. Somebody needs to stop by. And I think if you look at the zoning map, we've got only, I believe, two or three on all of Avenue H that's currently zoned commercial, because across the street, it's all light industrial. So, I say, just give him his 90 days, or whatever he needs, and just find out what the neighborhood thinks.
I'd just like to say that we passed an ordinance. It was an alcohol ordinance, and I feel like we need to stick by that. I feel like the promise that was made, or the gesture that was made to the neighbors that were in that neighborhood, that there wasn't going to be any alcohol, unless you've had all the neighbors in that neighborhood completely changed, I would say that I would... I find it that you're reneging on your promise. And I find that disturbing, to say the least, on my side. But as far as the traffic flow and having to push someone, I don't say that we're going to force anybody to go anywhere. I do my shopping. I think ahead when I'm going to shop. And I don't believe that that's what that purpose was when you came in on that corner, was to provide someone's need for alcohol. And I would uphold the Planning Commission and staff on this decision, is to not to give you the CUP.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Zink?
I'm just speaking as a citizen. I don't know the applicant or anything like that. But I believe by not giving him his CUP, it's anti-business for Lancaster. It's anti-American, and it's anti-common sense. The reason that these ordinance came about was so politicians could get re-elected in office. It had nothing to do with making the neighborhood safer and all this stuff. But it was just anti-alcohol by a lot of Christian fanatics, is really what it was. And they, last I checked, Lancaster is not...
What about Muslim fanatics?
Oh, okay, religious fanatics, how about that? Excuse me. I don't know many Muslims, so religion to me is Christian, so... But the other thing is, life is always changing. You can't hold people down to, you know, a promise, or else everyone would be married to the same man or woman for the rest of their life. Life always changes. So, we can't hold them to that. The other thing is, you can't, as a city, tell people, "Hey, we want to make it convenient. We don't want you to use cars. We want you to ride bikes and walk. And we're going to put convenience stores next to you, but we're going to tell you what you can and cannot buy." I don't drink beer. I think it tastes like piss. But I drink malt liquor, and I drink liquor. But I drink malt liquor, and I drink liquor. So you're telling me what I can as an American drink? Because to your convenience, or to what you think as a government, what is good for me? The other thing is, why not, you treat these convenience store people like second-class businesses. Instead of, they're hard-working people that want to put their kids through college, just like every other business owner. And if, why be in fear of something? Roosevelt, my favorite saying is, fear nothing, wait, what is it? There's nothing to fear but fear itself. Why are we so fearful of something that's not even there yet? There's never been a commercial problem there. This is a new development. This should be allowed. The other thing is, that I feel, is that the city council and commissioners, I never see you guys go into these stores and say, hey, how's it going? How's it doing? Thank you for not selling to minors. I don't see you guys being active with these people in our community. And the other thing is, the last thing was...
That's why I got a deputy mayor.
Huh? The other thing that was important is, you can ask this guy to be a member of the neighborhood watch also, and make him a part of the, make him part of bringing the community up and make it convenient, instead of, like, distancing yourself. These are our people. These are our citizens. These are our neighbors. These are our business people. They provide more of a convenience, and we interact more with them than police officers. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Zink. Mr. Zink, have you ever seen any of us buy gas?
I've never seen you guys, no.
Have you ever seen me buy groceries?
No.
Have you ever seen me eat in a restaurant? Thanks.
But I have gone and asked convenience store owners and cigarette store owners if you guys have ever came in and talked to them, and they said no.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Zink, I'd just like to say that when I do stop and buy gas, or buy a Coke, or whatever, wherever I go, I do stop and I ask, how's it going in the neighborhood?
Your time's up, Mr. Zink.
But the most convenient place is a mile away from the aftermarket.
But my point is that I do ask, when I go into places, I quite often ask people, how's it going? Is there anything that, you know, something going on that we should know about? And I don't always tell them that I'm on the council, but I ask questions. In this instance, what my whole point is, is that we passed an ordinance that gives guidelines to staff, the planning commission, for where to put businesses. All that says to me is that there are plans, there are guidelines out there, we have stop signs, we have red lights. Now, if the council believes that we need to go back and we need to work on our ordinance, well, then maybe that's the discussion we need to have. But as far as the ordinance is, right now, I do not support the CUP. We've got to start with something, and that's our guidelines. So that's what I'm going by.
Everybody done?
Well, I agree with Councilwoman Marcus on the ordinance, except in one aspect, that the reason we have an appeal process is if we write something so strict and there's no ability to be flexible, then, you know, what if you had a piece of property like that and you wanted a Trader Joe's to go there? Then you'd be stuck also. So it gives us the ability to look at it from a different viewpoint. But I do, and I'd like to make the motion that we...
No, I'm not done talking.
I could still make a motion. It's Robert's rules of order.
Are we going to start that?
No.
I haven't had the opportunity to speak, and I'd like you to wait until I'm done.
That's fine.
All right? Thank you very much. There's a reason why we have these ordinances, not to put these in neighborhoods. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, is I do understand alcoholism better than most people in this room. And what you don't want is you don't want it accessible to the neighborhood house, you know, so that you can walk outside your door when you run out and get more. And what, the reason for that is because when you have alcoholism in a home, it endangers the entire family. And it is stupid. It is absolutely stupid to put these facilities in neighborhoods for that very reason. You know, the reality is, 60% of our homes are affected by alcoholism. 17% of the population is suffering from alcoholism. It's a huge danger. And this is an economically distressed neighborhood to begin with. It wouldn't surprise me if people decided that that's what they wanted. There are very sound reasons why you have an obstacle between the place where people live and the accessibility of alcohol. I can just tell you from experience that it would have been a worse situation in my household 30 years ago, when I was drinking, if I could walk to the store to get it. And I think that's what a lot of progressive cities have recognized, that it has to be controlled. You know, if you want to continue it and poll the neighborhood, fine, poll the neighborhood. But it wouldn't, it's not going to change my vote, and I would encourage all of you to recognize that, no, neighborhoods don't get to say, because we want it, the rule shouldn't apply. I mean, why don't we put a gambling hall there if they want to gamble? I mean, that's just not sound reasoning. We have sound planning principles. If they're not sound, I agree with Councilwoman Marcus, let's change them. But this is something that is sound, and something we should hold on to. And it's been a problem in every city that hasn't. And we have to recognize that we're becoming more and more of an urban area, and we are creating urban problems if we allow alcohol sales in the neighborhood. And that's how I feel about it. But if you want to make a motion, make the motion.
While I see your concern for alcoholism and alcohol in the neighborhoods, that's not the purpose of our alcohol ordinance. And it might be for some people, but that's not the reason why the city passed it. And I don't think government should be passing ordinances to try to control people's behavior as alcohol.
So we should allow alcohol being sold anywhere? I mean, no, there's actually very good reasons why alcohol is a controlled drug.
Absolutely. And not to control people's alcoholism, it's to control public safety. So when we create those in the neighborhoods, we create it because that typically brings in an unseemly group of people. They're drinking out in the parking lot, they're harassing citizens.
Oh, it's okay if they, it's okay if they get drunk, as long as they're not, as long as they're not obvious and out in the open about it?
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't know when drunkenness was against the law in your own home. If somebody wants to go home and drink until they pass out, why is government going to tell them they can't do that?
Well, why do you tell, why do you tell them they shouldn't use drugs till they pass out? I mean, there's very good reasons why we control these substances in neighborhoods.
We have a very protracted disquisition on what government should do or not. In this case, I disagree with that we're doing it to control alcoholism, we're doing it...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Do not say I'm saying it to control alcoholism. We're doing it to control alcohol. And when you reframe these issues, just because you want to make a point with the audience, it's inappropriate. We have these rules for very sound reasons, and it is the control of alcohol, not the control necessarily of just alcoholism. And what you're saying, it's perfectly okay for people to walk to the store, get their alcohol, as long as they're not drinking it out in public in a plastic bag. What you're really saying is that you, as long as they're not economically depressed people who do that type of behavior, it's fine with you. They just have to have a certain level of appearances. Is that what you're saying?
No.
Why don't you make a motion to repeal all of our alcohol ordinances if you think that it's perfectly appropriate for any neighborhood that wants it to have it? I mean, that's ludicrous. It's simply ludicrous to, nobody has given us a reason why this particular, this particular location should be an exception to the rule, other than he wants it, and he might be able to get the neighbors to agree to it. And if we're going to do it that way, I really want to know what the surveying process is going to be, and who's going to do the survey? And who's going to pay for the survey? Are we going to allow the applicant to survey the neighbors?
I know, we could talk to staff about that, but not to misframe your words, it was you, Mr. Mayor, that was talking about alcoholism and people getting easy access to it, living in the neighborhood, that it would control, that it would contribute to their problem of alcoholism. It wasn't my words that brought that up. What I'm saying is that, for me, this is on the peripheral loop. Councilman Mann brought it up, a number of people have brought it up before. We're saying, do you want somebody to drive into the interior of the city to make a purchase like this? Or can somebody make a purchase like this on the peripheral loop? Is that rise to the level of looking at the ordinance for a variance? Maybe. But the thing that bothers me is that I don't even want to talk about that yet, until somebody has come back with what the citizens have said. No, we're not going to go through the thing in any little neighborhood that votes, we're going to change every ordinance. We're going to look at each one that's important that comes on appeal. And I think in this case, it's important that we get the citizens...
Mr. Ludiki, help me out here. I thought that a peripheral loop was we didn't want people coming in and out of stores onto the roadway. Isn't that correct?
To the extent that we can, we try to limit the number of access points for vehicles onto peripheral loop streets.
Okay, well, speak English. Does that mean we shouldn't have stores on the peripheral loop?
It doesn't mean we shouldn't have them. It means we should be very careful about where they're located.
So is it being the peripheral loop a reason why we would want to put a store there?
I can understand why a landowner would want to do that, because that's where the heavy traffic flow is. But what we do is we try to balance that desire with our desire to make sure the traffic flows well.
And so if we're going to put stores on the peripheral loop, is it a good idea to make it so they can drink before they go onto the peripheral loop?
Actually, our ordinance doesn't speak to that issue. It simply speaks to proximity between, and I guess I would say this, the, if you look at the alcohol ordinance in its entirety, its general aim is to keep primary alcohol sellers away from sensitive uses while allowing incidental-type sellers, which bring other benefits to a neighborhood, to be in that proximity. For example, if this were a drugstore or a grocery store, we wouldn't even be having this conversation on separation distances. But it's a mini-market, which is a primary seller, we would have the same conversation if it were a liquor store, a bar, or something of that type.
That's what caused it.
And that's the distinction.
The other concern I have is we have a planning commission, you know, and the planning commission, it was a 7-0 vote. Weren't all these arguments made to them?
Yes.
And they did their job very well. Their job is to look and make sure that a CUP conforms to the general plan and the ordinance of the city. And they did their job, exactly the way they should have. If anybody voted differently or made an argument differently, I'd be questioning, why are they not following the laws of the city?
I would disagree.
But it's up to the city, and the reason why we have an appeal process is that we do get the purview of making variances, reasonable variances.
Wait a minute. I mean, all the times I was on the planning commission and these people would come up with a CUP that didn't conform to the rules and I decided it, I wasn't supposed to be doing that. I was supposed to be doing a checklist. Mr. Boz, do not allow your planning commission to do that. There is no checklist here. I expect people to exercise independent judgment and to make sound decisions for the city. And all I'm saying is, I haven't seen a reason why this case should be an exception, other than the fact that he's willing to go get the local people around it to vote. I mean, am I missing something? Is there some other reason why this particular store should be an exception? Did you hear something?
I think the loop is the major issue. What we're talking about here is, we don't want a whole bunch of businesses on the loop. We have one, okay? I do not want people driving in town for a six-pack of beer. But I don't want this store selling singles. I don't want this store selling spirits. But if they're going to buy a six-pack of beer and go home, I don't have a problem with that. But I don't, and I don't want the city to spend millions of dollars to put the overpasses in to bypass everything, and then say, but now, to buy a six-pack, you have to drive in town. It doesn't make sense to me. That part doesn't make sense. I don't agree with the type 21 that Mr. Cohen said. Okay, so I'm saying that. But if we're going to limit the number of accesses, this is a great way to limit it. It serves your purpose. And I have to say, the planning commission did their job. Their job is not to change the ordinances, in my opinion. Their job is to do what the ordinances say.
All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we continue this for 90 days, and that'll give staff an opportunity to make sure that Mr. Cohen and the applicant brings back information enough that can verify to us that the citizens are okay with it, the normal procedures, and also bring back any information for the mayor and the rest of the council that the mayor's brought up, valid issues on why does this make it any different? And you can bring back that information, then we can have another discussion.
I would second that motion.
Okay, well, I'd like normal to find. I mean, in the normal course. Do we have a normal course for deciding whether or not the neighbors are approving of this?
No, I meant the normal course of notifying the citizens of the meetings and identifying them. There's a mailing process and a certain distance, but we can trust staff.
I'm not aware of a mailing process.
Brian, may I ask, this is a CUP, so on the appeal process, did it have to be re-noticed or no?
Yes, it was re-noticed.
Right, so the neighborhood's already been alerted, so I'll be interested. Obviously, we don't have anybody here tonight saying no, so let's go get the findings of what is brought back as far as the acceptance.
Can I just ask one more question? Mr. Ludiki, you said that in 1980, when the loop was, okay, you said it was a traffic carrier versus providing, what was the term you said?
It's intended primarily to provide for through traffic, as opposed to other arterial streets in the city that are designed to provide access to the land uses along them. The original intent of the loop was more of an expressway kind of an approach.
Is there a process other than, I mean, come on, I think the notice process is ludicrous. I mean, people don't respond to it. It doesn't work, we all know it. You know, I don't know how many of you people actually read those signs that they post on the walls. I don't. Is there a way to actually find out what the neighbors really do think, rather than doing a snow job on it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think you'd probably, if you really want to know, and one of the weaknesses of California's requirement for mailing is it goes to the owner of the property. We don't know, quite frankly, how many of these houses are owner or renter occupied. If it's an owner that gets it, he may not care one way or the other. But I think the only other way to get around that is to actually go door-to-door, which we've had applicants do. We have had applicants hire people to go out and actually go door-to-door and talk to the actual residents.
My only concern is, if I was the applicant doing that, you know, I might not report everybody who was opposed to it.
I could certainly see that.
Is there a way we can, is there a mailing thing that we can mail to the actual residents of all of those within a quarter-mile or something?
There probably is some system we could figure out to do that.
Yeah, we could do that. We could do it either by door hanger...
Well, the motion, just to continue it, and then anything could be done, it's not really part of the motion. And I agree with that, too. What's going to happen is that when they bring it back to us, it's going to be this council that decides whether or not it raised to the level that we think they actually polled the people properly. If it doesn't, then it's not going to pass. I mean, if they come back and say, yeah, we couldn't contact a lot of people, we got 10 people saying yay, that's not going to cut it. They're going to have to really show an effort.
Mayor and council, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So what I might suggest is that we know the intent of council is that everyone within a quarter-mile be notified. We can make sure that either by door hanger, and we would ask the applicant to pay, either by door hanger or mailing, that that all goes to them. I think as staff, we'd like to work with the applicant and the planning commission, how we make sure that then these people have a voice. You know, it was talking out loud, maybe it's a meeting, maybe it's something like that. But we can make sure that everyone within a quarter-mile is notified. Okay, thank you.
Can I just say one last thing? Is when it's notified, when the information is put out there, the people who are concerned about this issue have already seen that the planning commission already voted against it. They've already seen that the staff has recommended against it, so.
All right. Ken, ask one more question. Axel, can you come up here real quick? Is there anything else we should be concerned with? You've heard, though.
Well, no, I really don't think so. I think the issue, the real core issue that we would be concerned about on the department has been brought up, and that's, what do we do about clientele who want to hang around in the parking lot and drink singles and a few of the other things that the vice mayor brought up? I think that that can be controlled. I think that that can be controlled if the council.
You can put a condition on the CUP.
That's correct. So if we -- if this did come around again and we looked at it, if we controlled the type of alcohol, the singles, it would be okay? It would be -- how can we make it better?
I think that's exactly what we need to do. We need to eliminate whatever causal factors would bring those kinds of activities or would get rid of those types of activities with individuals that are going to be congregating and drinking there on the property. That would be my big concern.
Councilmember Crist, historically on the planning commission, when there was some concerns about an intensive use and there were some questions, sometimes we would put a six-month condition on it with it coming back. And then if need be, you'd get it as tight as you want. So if there needs to be a guard or if there's issues with the sheriff's department, then you deal with it accordingly. And I'm sure Brian could dig into the archives or make suggestions of what's been already done historically, if need be.
Well, I know when I watched the planning commission meeting, that they reported that -- and this may or may not have anything to do with it, but it might be something to look out in the future, is there were 99 crimes within a half-mile radius within the last six months. And I think that was from 909 to 210, is that period.
Is this a red zone?
It teeters between a red zone and yellow. It was historically a red zone all the time. There was a significant sheriff's department effort in that area, which did get it back. I think one of the things we will bring back to you based on the mayor's request is crime stats for that area over several periods of time, comparative crime stats, because the number itself doesn't mean anything unless you compare it to other areas.
Okay. Everybody ready? Let's vote. Three, two, with Marcus and Parrish opposed. Okay, moving on. Public hearing item number six. Any speaker cards?
No speakers.
Let's waive the presentation, open and close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 1043.
Mr. Mann, did you -- you had talked about abstaining.
Yeah, my intention is just to abstain.
I'll second the motion.
If there's a conflict, you need to recuse yourself, not abstain.
The chairman of the Boulevard Association is my son. Obviously, from the standpoint of there's -- we've gone through this discussion once before, there's no monetary or -- and so just for the sake of making sure the public doesn't misunderstand.
Right. And the rule is that if it only -- the financial interest would only apply to a dependent child.
Right.
And he clearly is not your dependent.
Right. And I could have chosen just to go ahead and vote either yes or no, but in this case, I did abstain.
You self-supporting now, Josh?
Right.
All right.
Thank you for that clarification.
And it's four with one extension. Four in favor. Moving on to public hearing item number seven. Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards.
Let's waive the reading and open and close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Can we do all three motions at once, Mr. McKeon?
No, I think.
Is that fine? Can we do all ordinances in one motion? And this one, since it's just the city? I'll move that we introduce ordinance number 945, 946, and 947.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on to joint continued business item number one. Any speaker cards?
No speaker's cards.
Okay, let's open and close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move that we adopt resolution number 13-10 and 14-10.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous.
And for the city, I'll move that we adopt resolution number 10-44, -45, -46, -47, and -48.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on to new business item number one.
Just one thing as a point here. I noticed on F, it says approve the changes to the proposed workforce. I didn't include that in the motion.
Oh, that's in the stat -- that's in the action itself.
Okay, thank you.
New business item number one. Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Let's open and close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we introduce ordinance number 948.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Moving on to new business item number two. Mr. Bozigian.
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself from this. I have a financial interest with the firefighters.
You do?
I do.
You going to tell us what it is?
No.
Okay.
Mayor Parrish, city council members at the last council meeting, some members of the fire department at Plant 42 came up asking for council support against a move by the Department of Defense to in-source some of the fire services. They did an excellent job, in my opinion, of giving reasons for that. Chief among them is there's a lot of seniority on that fire department, many over 20 years. And if it was in-sourced, I believe the number was 37 of the 44 would not be eligible for their positions. We did receive information from the firefighters. We did craft a resolution for your consideration. It essentially says the city council is against the in-source move because it's detrimental to the community and also that we would communicate our position to our congressman and the Department of Defense if you so pass this ordinance. I know that we have some members of the audience here that are the firefighters. I don't know if they put in any cards. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or I'm sure some of these gentlemen would do.
Any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt resolution number 10-49.
I support.
Let's vote. And it's four in favor with Mr. Crist recusing himself. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Moving on, council agenda, item number one. I'm nominating Kitty. Do we have to vote on this now? Oh, yeah, we do. Okay. All right. I pretty much explained it earlier, the purpose of her. She's an attorney with my office. She has been involved with all of the China negotiations except the initial one. And that's who I'd like to have deputy mayor. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Moving on to item number two, nominating Dennis Greer to the Criminal Justice Commission. He's been on it for two years, but this is a reappointment. And we're -- I'm nominating Lisa Moulton to the Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission. Is there a motion?
I move for the nomination and appointment.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Lisa, you want to come on down, and Jerry will swear you in.
If you raise your right hand, repeat after me using your name. I.
I, Lisa Moulton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
I can mention.
Thank you.
I just need your signature.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. CA, item number three, the Palmdale Power Plant. Who's going to lead this?
Robert Neal is going to present some information based on a request from council member Crist from the Air Quality District meeting. And I believe we have Tony Peña from Inland Energy, who's the consultant for the city of Palmdale, who's available to answer any of your questions.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here to give you a brief report regarding Palmdale Power Plant's air quality. As Marcus mentioned, Tony Peña is here and has agreed to answer questions. I'd also like to acknowledge Brett Banks from the Air District is also here. I am using some slides that were presented to the Allen Valley Air Quality Control -- Air Quality Management District and also some materials from the project's AFC, which is their application for certification. This basically summarizes the project. It's a project that is owned by the city of Palmdale, being developed by Inland Energy. It's a gas-fired power plant that also combines solar thermal. Solar thermal, not being photovoltaic, but uses a parabolic lens to heat oil. Roughly 50 megawatts of the 570 megawatts is from the solar thermal. It uses recycled water. Its estimated project value is about $1 billion. This slide shows its location. It is near the intersection of Avenue M and Challenger Way. 250 -- roughly 250 acres of the project is for the solar thermal. The power block, you see in blue, is where air emissions would come from when the plant is operational. This is a schematic of the plant, showing the location of the gas turbines. Also, what I'd like to point out is the stacks behind those letters that says HRSG, which are the heat recovery steam generators. There is a plume that comes from that, but mostly it's an invisible plume. And on the right, you will see the cooling towers, which are in green, right over here. And that's where the residents of Lancaster will see a water vapor plume. This slide shows the routing of a recycled water line to the project site. The project uses 2,600 gallons per minute, roughly 3,000 to 4,000 acre-feet per year. This slide here shows the routing of a gas line. It's a 20-inch gas line that feeds the plant, uses a large amount of gas, but it produces a large amount of electricity. This is a little hard to read, but it shows the routing of the transmission line. What I'd like to point out is here in red is where the plant is to be located, and directly south over here is Vincent Station. And that the project needs to make a connection to that, and it's kind of taken an unusual route, which is to go easterly and then northerly back around to the Vincent Station to hook into the grid. At 570 megawatts, it is a very large plant. It would supply more than the needs of the city of Palmdale, more than the needs of the city of Lancaster. It is clearly intended to export electricity. It is a plant that would run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This is a rendering that was presented to the Air Quality District of the vapor plume. We took some liberties here because really, there's going to be a point in time during the year when the vapor plume will actually extend as far as potentially six miles in length.
Is that vertical?
It really will happen at a point in time when there's relatively a small amount of wind, high moisture content in the air, and it's relatively cool. So actually, I think I have a chart that shows that the frequency is about 14 hours a year is when that would happen. What you can see in this rendering is that they've superimposed the power plant, and the power plant is right back in here. And those stacks there are 145 feet high, and this is where the cooling towers are located, which stacks are a little bit lower. This is from the railroad tracks, which is at Sierra Highway near Avenue M, and you can actually see the Water Works's supply tank right there.
Go back.
Go back.
How tall is that water tank?
That water tank, I believe it's probably on the order of 25, 30 feet.
And how tall are the stacks for that power plant?
Those stacks are 145 feet.
Can we safely say that this is not to scale?
You know, I talked to Tony Peña. He actually tells me it is, that it may be the fact that the tanks are closer, that they look larger. But Tony's here, and he'd be happy to answer questions about how this was put together. I just wanted to point out that the plume that was shown is not the worst case. The worst case will be a plume that's 32,100 feet, which is a little over six miles. We tried to put the size of the plant in perspective, and we picked a distance of 1,740 feet because that's really about where the roadway Avenue M is, near the entrance of the plant. And you can see on the right-hand side of the plant at 145 feet. What we did is we superimposed a house that was 20-foot-high, kind of give you a perspective of what that plant would look like in terms of a perspective. I'm not sure this does a really great job, but it was just to give you a better sense of farther you get away, the smaller that plant will look like. This is a chart showing the actual emissions. We sat down and added the tonnage of it, and this power plant will produce 1.3 million pounds of pollutants a year in the forms of nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, volatile organic carbons, and particulate matter, and also sulfur dioxide. And if you look at this chart, what you'll also notice is that the cooling towers really don't release very much in terms of pollution, but it comes from the combustion of the natural This is a table that comes from the AFC, showing an estimated lengths of visible plume. On the right-hand side of the table, you'll notice it says cooling towers, and the maximum plume length case for 14 hours over a course of three years is a 32,100-foot length. plume length case for 14 hours over a course of three years is a 32,100-foot length, which is a six-mile length. But the reality is, if you look at the 90 percentile, that most of the time, there would be a plume length of 145 foot or less, is what the report says. It also indicates that there is a plume that might be visible from those other stacks, the 145-foot stacks of 1,300 feet for less than an hour a year.
How are they getting those numbers? I mean, there's only 14 hours of cold, moist days in the Antelope Valley. I mean, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, that's why Tony's here. I'm sure he'll help explain how they modeled it. But I know that they use modeling software, and that they've done a lot of work, so I'll let them go into the details. But this is what's presented in their application for certification. We took the information with regards to wind and sensitive receptors around the plant site, and we put them on an aerial, and that's this chart here. What I'd like to point out to you is that, based on the information in the AFC, they looked at sensitive receptors to a distance about three miles away from the plant. The wind blows 90% of the time in this location, which is not a surprise to us who live around here. And 85% of that time, it blows to the northeast in this quadrant that we shaded in blue. The green indicates parks. On the left-hand side, you'll see it, the three-miles circle shows it going through City Park. And on the right-hand side, the green block there is the Soccer Center. Also, what we highlighted in the lighter green are locations of schools. This is a chart that basically shows that the project's schedule indicates that they're looking for, in the very near future, the certification of the plant. Actually, they expect it in the fourth quarter. I could tell you that the project plan has a 27-month construction schedule. In their AFC, they're looking at an operational start as early as 2013, although I do understand that that might slip a little bit. With that, I am available for questions. And also, again, Mr. Peña is here and can answer questions I can't.
Question, Mr. Mayor, for Mr. Neal?
Yes.
If a power plant, you said before that the power plant like this is probably going to produce more energy than the city of Palmdale needs and the city of Lancaster needs. Is there such a thing as an aggregate that could be formed that could actually reduce the energy costs for all the citizens in the Antelope Valley?
That is a good question. It really depends on how the deal's set up. I will tell you that in their documentation, they don't indicate the total numbers of hours of operation for certain, because they haven't secured gas supplies, and how that might be structured, what benefits might come back to the community of Palmdale, and if there would be any additional benefits that might come back to the city of Lancaster.
The other question also is, if we're able to move forward with the Daystar Farms project on Sanitation District 14's property, and the line, transmission lines that they would create, would that be beneficial to this power plant as a connection to get up to that main line?
Absolutely. Vice Mayor, as you're well aware, the Daystar Farms project is a proposal for using a property now being planned for agriculture with using recycled water from the sanitation district. Part of that proposal is to build a transmission line that would run from Edwards Air Force Base back down to Vincent Station. That proposal would significantly reduce the amount of construction in terms of the transmission line that this project would have to build.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
I don't have any questions for him, but...
I want to be clear on this. This is a private company that is going to be selling power, right?
You know, why don't I invite Tony? He could probably explain the business relationship Inland has with the city of Palmdale. But the way I understood the information is that the city of Palmdale owns the plant until maybe they go out and sell it to maybe a private party, or maybe they continue to be a partner after that. There really is no details of how that agreement is structured.
Well, we do know that they have been in negotiations to sell the plant before it's even built. Isn't that correct?
I don't for certain, but I suspect that to be the case.
That was my understanding of it. Mr. Neal may not be aware of that, but that was my understanding of it.
So, we're not talking about building a power plant to lower people's energy costs or to lower their electric bills? Am I accurate in that?
I suspect it's probably a plant for profit, but I don't know what the arrangements are between Palmdale and the potential future developer.
Well, I guess it's safe to assume that if a private company buys it, they're not going to buy it with a cap on what they can charge for the electricity. In fact, the electricity isn't going to go to the consumer. It's going to go to the grid. Isn't that right?
I would believe that. I did some back-of-the-envelope calculations. A 570-megawatt plant would generate 4.5 to 5 billion kilowatt-hours per year, using some numbers I understand to be in the industry. We're talking about a plant whose revenues are going to be in the order of hundreds of millions of dollars per year for the sale of electricity.
So, there isn't any reason why they couldn't get rid of the plume? Okay, let's have him come up.
Tony, would you join us?
Mr. Mayor, it's been a long time since I've been here. Councilmembers, which of your questions would you like me to begin with?
Well, certainly technologically feasible to remove that plume from ever being out there. Isn't that correct?
It's technologically feasible to minimize that plume. It is not financially viable to do that. It's not practical.
How do you define viable?
It would interfere with the profit margin of the project.
It wouldn't make it unprofitable, however.
I don't know. I've not analyzed it to that degree.
It would... So, just so we're clear, what you're proposing to do is to significantly alter the landscape, significantly alter the view of all of the citizens of Lancaster. And I noticed that the pictures are all from the south pointing north, and there's no pictures from the north going south, which is the view that's going to be disrupted.
So, we're clear. The California Energy Commission dictates the vantage points that they want, what they refer to as key observation points. And we took those photos and created those renderings from the exact places that we were requested to do that by the California Energy Commission, who is the regulatory authority for this project.
You can make room for the possibility that the people of Lancaster would like to know just what impact this is going to have, both on their view of the mountains and as to whether or not, I mean, this is going to be what you see from, you know, a 10-mile radius. Isn't that accurate?
I believe that to be accurate, or potentially accurate. The modeling that we did and the rendering that we provided is a culmination of the worst-case scenarios. We add margin to every calculation. That model is very conservative by design. So, when we say that 20% of the time, you could see the plume that we drew, not the one that has been modified, but the one that we calculated, that assumes a number of factors. It assumes that the wind is not blowing, that the humidity is high, and that it's very cold, and that the plant is running at full load. You actually need all of those factors together to see what we put on that rendering. The times when it's not there, you'll not see the plume. You have to have all of those factors together. And 20% is an estimate from what modeling is capable of being today that says could be 20%, up to 20% of the time, we could see that.
One in five days.
When I go to Victorville, I always see it. I always see it.
You do not see it in the summer.
Every time I land at the airport, I see it.
I completely disagree with that. Having been the plant engineer at that High Desert Power Project, I can tell you that, A, we never had any visual emissions coming out of the stacks, and B, we only had vapor water moisture coming off of that cooling tower.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
In the whole humid days. So, if you go there during the summer, you could not have seen that.
Well, I didn't go there during the summer.
If you went there in the spring, you could not have seen that. So, you're limited to a certain finite amount of time when that's actually physically capable of being produced.
The winter.
Yes.
In the fall.
Well, the cold, the damp, the non-windy winter.
So, what are we defining as cold?
Well, that's in the model. And I, without getting into an analysis of the model, it has a lot to do with the dew point and the temperature and the barometric pressures and lots of things that are in very, very extreme detail. I mean, as much level of detail that we know how to model these things.
Let me... You would agree that this is going to have a significant impact, at least on the view of the people who live in Lancaster?
It is no different than the moisture clouds that you see coming off of...
That's not what I'm asking you. What I'm asking you is the plant itself.
Well, then, I would say no. I do not agree with that.
You don't think that 145 feet, is that what the stacks are, is 145 feet?
Yes, sir, they are.
That stacks going up 145 feet, and the moisture cloud, be whatever it is, is not going to significantly impact the people of Lancaster?
I mean, what do you mean by significantly? Do you...
Is it going to lower the...
Help me understand that. Is it going to be different than it is today? Of course it will be. Yes, sir.
Is it going to be more pleasant or less pleasant?
I would imagine that's a judgment called by the individual. Would you not?
Let me ask you...
Is there anybody alive that is going to find that plant more visually pleasing than the absence of the plant?
Oh, I would think there'd be many people.
I have not met them.
Fair enough.
Okay. What benefit are the people of Lancaster going to get?
Oh, I would think there'd be lots of benefit, not only for Lancaster, but for the entire Antelope Valley.
But what we're concerned about is the people of Lancaster. Can you tell me the benefit?
They're going to be the... Okay. I would see the immediate benefits of being the construction jobs, which are estimated to be in excess of 600 jobs. So, assuming that there are construction workers in the city of Lancaster, I would see that they would benefit.
Okay.
There are going to be positions at the plant, upwards to 45 or 50 full-time positions and some temporary positions. Assuming that there are folks who live in Lancaster who would be interested in that type of work, they would have that opportunity. Furthermore, that plant will purchase somewhere around $5 million from the local economy for supplies and merchandise to keep that plant operational. And I would think the vendors and the businessmen of the community in Lancaster as well as Palmdale would be very interested in that.
Most of the labor force is a trained labor force. Isn't that right?
For the construction?
No, for the operation of the plant.
No, sir. For the construction only.
The operation of the plant doesn't require a trained labor force?
A trade?
Trained.
Oh, I beg your pardon. Then, yes, it will be a trained labor force.
So, the labor force is probably going to be brought in to run that plant. Isn't that right?
No, I wouldn't make that assumption. No, sir. When we built the High Desert Power Project in Victorville, a very high percentage of the operations and maintenance jobs were filled by people who were local.
Maintenance meaning janitorial?
No, sir. Maintenance being plant maintenance, mechanics working on valves and equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
I do. Have you been with this design from the beginning?
Yes, sir, I have.
And you did the Victorville plant?
The High Desert Project or the Victorville II plant? To which are you referring?
The Victorville II plant.
Yes, sir, we did.
Okay. Robert, can you go back to the reclamation, the water reclamation that we saw? All that property on which would be the bottom of the screen along Avenue P is industrial along Plant 42.
Yes, sir.
Why are you moving the line seven miles when you can just put it across the street?
If you're referring to the pipeline that's coming down from the Lancaster Station that will ultimately connect with the one coming out of the Palmdale Station, it was a matter of timing. When we met with the Lancaster folks and when we were involved in the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan, it was a timing difference. Palmdale could put this one in at a time period that would support the operation of the plant as early as 2013. Lancaster's schedule was further behind. My understanding of the Integrated Regional Water Management Plan is that ultimately, they will connect.
I need a laser pointer.
And you're going to spend millions and millions of dollars to do that?
I don't know the price, sir.
Okay. Can we go to the... Are you done with this one?
Well, wait a minute. I don't think he answered your question. What he's asking you is, here's a pipeline that you're running all the way over here, right?
Correct.
Miles and miles and miles, millions and millions of dollars, right? But if you built the plant right here, you'd just run it across the street.
Oh, no, I better understand the question. No, that's not what I answered. Why did we locate the plant there instead of over there?
No, what he's asking you is, why would you run miles and miles and millions and millions of dollars when you could do it across the street? I guess what we're asking you is, why have they moved it out of Palmdale and put it right on our border at the cost of millions and millions of dollars? Was there a reason other than to get it outside as far as they could, out of their own city limits and into ours?
So, there were a number of factors, financial, development, and technical, that led to choosing that site. Never did I hear a factor that included what you just suggested.
Well, then, we would like an answer to the question. What's wrong with all of this? And you wouldn't have to spend those millions of dollars.
I don't have the answer to that question.
Plume over Plant 42?
Could it be that the plume is so large that it would affect the Plant 42 operations?
It doesn't affect city of Lancaster.
It could be, but...
So, if it affects the Plant 42 operations, they've decided to move it over and affect the city of Lancaster and affect our Soccer Center and affect us instead of affecting them. Correct?
No, I won't say correct. What I'll tell you is there were a number of factors that led to that point, that project selection. Had to do with the availability of property, had to do with the access of the laterals, and it had to do with lots of things that fit into development. None of those factors were to try to get it as close to Lancaster as possible, to the best of my knowledge.
It's the same property owner, right?
I don't know that.
You know, I've been hearing a lot about this hybrid plant.
Yes, sir.
What percentage of the electrons produced by the plant are actually going to get on the grid that are solar-generated?
Just under 10%.
And that's 24 hours a day, well, 12 hours a day, or... And that's 24 hours a day, well, 12 hours a day, or is that, how do you compute that?
Well, the safest or the simplest way would make the, make the assumption that the plant will run all the time, which we don't know if that's the case at all. The second assumption for the percentage of solar is assuming very efficient operation. The tracking mechanism will grab the sun first opportunity and follow it as far as a day. The engineering calculation says that that's approximately 50 megawatts. 50 megawatts is approximately 9% of 570 megawatts.
In calculating the cost of all this, has there been any consideration of compensating Lancaster for changing their trademark from perfectly clear to something else?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, so let me be clear on the benefits. After construction is completed, and I will give you, 600 construction jobs are significant. But after construction is completed, it's 45 people to run this plant?
Yes, sir.
And so the only benefit you can tell me that Lancaster's going to get from this is some of those 45 people may decide to be Lancaster residents, or may be Lancaster residents, and in exchange for that, we're going to significantly alter the landscape in what would you at least agree that most of us who have chose to live in a perfectly clear environment might find objectionable?
I'll agree with most of that. I'll grant you that the plume is going to be unattractive to some folks. The additional benefits that you left out was the amount of business that that project will generate throughout the Antelope Valley. The High Desert Power Project purchases roughly $5 million locally of parts, materials, office supplies, pizzas, plaques, what have you. And the community, the business community around that High Desert Project benefits from that, not just the city of Victorville, where the plant is located, but also Hesperio, Atlanto, and Apple Valley.
My understanding is that if the city of Victorville had to do this all over again, they wouldn't be doing this. Isn't that correct?
Uh, no, sir, I don't believe that. And I think you may be confusing the Victorville II project, which has been permitted but not built, with the existing High Desert Power Project that you referred to earlier when you fly into SCLA.
And in any event, one of them they wish they hadn't done, isn't that right?
Not to my knowledge.
Mr. Bazigian, perhaps you could help us on that?
I would say that's a very accurate statement in that it caused them severe financial hardship. I don't know which of the two plants. I know one of them did.
Oh, I'm not withstanding the fact that it was more costly, and they ran into financial conditions as a result of the downturn of the economy. But the basis for the project and their move to go forward and permanent is as sound today as it was when they made the decision. And it was that comment that I responded to.
Could we look at the gas pipeline, please? That's the water, right?
Yes.
Is there one for the gas? Oh, I have to give you this. Okay.
There it is.
Okay, is that it?
That's the gas line.
I think Mr. Chris had a similar question.
It's the same question. Why are you running an additional, the pipeline, an additional seven miles?
Gentlemen, without appearing to sound insensitive or sarcastic, the plant site was chosen for a lot of reasons, all of which I don't have listed this evening. Running laterals to a plant, transmission out, fuel in, water in, is factored into the economics of the project. The ideal location for a power plant would be in the middle of nowhere, sitting right next to a reclamation facility, a gas line, and a transmission tower. That typically is not the situation that we have to work with. So we have to compromise. We have to run longer than would be otherwise desired fuel, perhaps water. The transmission route may have to be altered significantly to accommodate others. But at no time at all was I ever party to anyone at the city of Palmdale or England Energy saying, "Let's get this plant as close to Lancaster as possible."
Well, and I would agree, I would agree that that didn't occur. But I think what you have to agree with is that if it was the citizens of Palmdale whose view of the mountains was going to have to be obstructed, like the view of the Lancaster citizens' view is going to be obstructed, the citizens of Palmdale would have been much less willing to elect a city council that approved this project. Isn't that true? I mean, isn't that true?
No, I disagree. And the reason I disagree is the, the plume, and I understand there's a lot of emotion associated with that, that water cloud. But the fact is, when the sun comes up and the wind blows and the moisture goes away, it evaporates. It just simply evaporates. That's physics as we understand it today. And we just don't have that many damp days in the desert. We don't have that many damp cold days in the desert. And so that 20% that you're seeing is a conservative estimate that's only going to occur during the winter months. So quite possibly, it was not an issue that went through the minds of the Palmdale City Councilman. And I say that speaking on their behalf without their knowledge. Let me be clear about that.
The other concern I have is, you know, I don't know if they told you, but we're in a drought, you know? In fact, it's not a drought, it's, it's a permanent condition. That, that water is incredibly valuable. It, it will, you know, reclaimed water will, quite frankly, determine whether or not we, we grow or don't grow, whether we become stagnant, or whether we flourish. And how much of that reclaimed water is going to be used every year?
Well, the estimate right now is it'll be over 3,000 acre feet, perhaps as high as 3,500 acre feet. And it's for the very use that you just stated, to grow, to grow the area. Additionally, I don't know if you're aware of it, but when the Integrated Regional Water Management Team was together, they cited a consumptive use, like a power plant, as the absolute best thing you could have for a backbone connecting certain municipalities. And the reason for that is municipalities tend to put the infrastructure in the ground, and they don't have a use for that initially. And they have all this pipe in the ground that's chock full, not going anywhere, and they still end up not using the water to the best advantage. This plant was factored into that team's analysis, and they were very excited about the fact that it would use that much water each year.
But the fact is, is that water could be used for solar, right?
This is solar.
Oh, please. Oh, please.
Well, what would you, is there a more specific question?
Well, yeah, when 10%, when 10% of it is theoretically solar and 90% of it is fossil fuels, it's not a solar plant. A solar plant is 100% solar.
It's a hybrid, or hence the name hybrid.
Well, actually, what, you know, a hybrid that I'm familiar with, it's 50% of energy, you know, green energy and 50% gas, something like a Prius. You know, the Prius doesn't, isn't 90-10. 90-10's a scam. We all know it's a scam. It's to say it's green, it's to get everybody, you know, feeling all fluffy about it. And reality is 90% of that is fossil fuels, with all of the, the problems that come with fossil fuel, power plants. And you've yet to give me a benefit that would significantly offset that, and it's going to use up a significant portion of our reclaimed water that could actually go into the solar fields that E-Solar is building and other companies are building. It's an offset that makes absolutely no sense to me, other than another energy company wants to come in and disrupt another community for profits that are going to leave the community and end up in Texas somewhere, or wherever these energy companies thrive. It certainly isn't going to benefit this community.
Well, let me try explaining a different benefit. Presently, the state is looking very hard at moving to a lot of renewables. The Assembly Bill 32 outlines a timetable and goals for that. The truth of the matter is, we cannot sustain the grid on solar and wind alone. You have to have reliable energy, energy that is either produced via a nuclear plant or a fossil plant, something that is fast responding and keep the grid sustaining at all time. We cannot do that. We cannot rely on solar energy in the evening hours, and we cannot rely on the intermittence of wind. The grid needs to be balanced. And I understand I'm oversimplifying this, and I ask for some leniency here. But it needs to be balanced so that what is being used is also what's being supplied. And the only way that the California ISO can guarantee that is with reliable energy. And today, the best reliable energy we have is natural gas fossil plants.
And I totally agree with that. And if you take into account that the Antelope Valley is uniquely, uniquely situated for solar energy, it is the finest place in the planet to produce solar energy. Don't you think that this type of power plant would be best situated someplace else so we could preserve the resources to take advantage of what solar we can produce?
Sir, in the, again, going back to the balancing analogy, it's not as simple as putting all the weights on one side and balancing the other side. The place where you insert the energy is also a factor in that equation. And the demand in the desert is going up. As more and more of us choose to live in the desert, the demand for electricity is higher. We run evaporative swamp cores more often, we run air conditioners more often.
We actually have air conditioning now.
Yeah, what we use is actually more than what they would use in the, in the basin, for example. So to strictly rely on the ability for the solar or the wind here and then for the, for the load management energy to come from elsewhere is not sound grid management.
It's not reliance. I mean, our life is not going to change one iota if we do not have this power plant. Not one iota.
No, sir, but when we had the brownouts some years ago, our life changed significantly for that. And the fact that the city of Palmdale went ahead and permitted this, or is in the process of permitting this, so that the Antelope Valley will have a generating station that'll make sure that that will not happen to us again, is significant for the lives of not only the folks in Palmdale, but Lancaster as well.
When did the permitting process start?
2005.
When did the, the idea, when was the idea conceived of?
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure on that. That was prior to my, my tenure. Probably, I don't know. I could wager a guess, but the short answer is I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any more questions?
Yeah, I had a question on the aggregate. When I had met with you a couple, number of years ago.
Yes, sir.
There was a plan from Randy and from the city of Palmdale that there's a possibility that we could have an aggregate to actually lower the energy costs.
Yes, sir.
Was that done in Victorville? Is that the plan for this power plant now?
The, and for the benefit of others, what you're referring to is called community choice aggregation. And what that allows municipalities to do is identify and aggregate their load so that they can buy directly from a power plant, thereby saving a substantial amount of money. And the municipality would have the option to do, I guess what municipalities always have the option to do, either pass that savings on dollar for dollar to the customer, or put that money into a fund and use it for the betterment of the, the community. Community choice aggregation, which was also Prop 16 on the ballot, is still alive and well. I'm not personally familiar with the efforts that have been since we last met, but in my mind, that is still very much an option.
Did they do it in Victorville?
No, sir. What happened in Victorville, and it's sort of what city manager alluded to, Victorville got its permit and was on the brink of construction when the financial market collapsed. So essentially, Victorville had to take that permit and put it on a shelf. They are now looking at their options, but for the last 18 months, Victorville has just had to suffer the consequences of spending a lot of money for a project and with a delayed
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lyle Talbot?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Wait a minute, Lyle. I asked a representative from the Desert Citizens Against Pollution to also give a presentation. Could we hear from them?
Praise God you're here.
I have not spoken in front of this city council before, so thank you for asking. I'm Jane Williams. I'm the Director of Desert Citizens Against Pollution. And first of all, Mark, it is wonderful to see Ralph's son here. I want you to pass my regards on to your father. It's been many years since I've seen him. Desert Citizens Against Pollution is a lead plaintiff in a number of lawsuits regarding this particular power plant and 11 other, 11 total plants in the basin. And the city of Lancaster and the city of Palmdale find themselves in a extremely unique position in what is going on currently in the state with energy policy. Under the auspices of AB 32, and I should also disclose to you that I chair the Environmental Justice Advisory Committee on AB 32, on the implementation of AB 32 with California Air Resources Board. As part of the implementation of AB 32, the governor issued a mandate for a 33% renewable portfolio standard. And so the utilities in the state are going to be required to procure 33% of their power by 2020 from renewable energy sources. Those sources are wind, solar, geothermal, and biomass. The grid is not interconnected. That's something to be very, very aware of here in California. And that is that a power plant that's built in Central Valley cannot transport power into Los Angeles because the grids, there's just like an electric cord, an extension cord that, so the power plants that are going to serve load for Southern California have to be built within a certain radius, a certain area. And this particular plant, this Palmdale plant, is designed to serve that load. And that's why it's situated where it is, partly where it is, near the Acton Substation. Southern California Edison just recently upgraded that substation, and it's one of the major conduits by which electrons get into the load center in Los Angeles. Now, another thing that you should know is that this is a merchant plant. It does not have a power purchase agreement. So its power has not been contracted for by Southern California Edison. The city of Lancaster nor the city of Palmdale are public utilities, so they cannot purchase power from this plant. They have to purchase power from Southern California Edison. There is only a few cities now that are currently community choice aggregators, and Proposition 16 did not pass, and so the cities will remain community choice aggregators. And that's a whole sort of other separate, the community choice aggregation is where you can become your own public utility, and if you wanted to, you could say, "We're going to purchase only green power." And so some cities are pushing that 33% envelope. The other important thing to understand is that we already have a bunch of power plants. The grid already exists fueled by both nuclear power, some renewables, and gas. Now, each one of you should be getting a tag in your SCE bill that basically is the power content label, just like when you go and buy, you know, food, it's got what's in there. There was legislation passed four or five years ago that gave you a power content label. That power content label is changing because there's a bill, SB 1368, that basically says that all the power that we're pulling in from out of the state that's coal, we're going to get off of that. That was a bill that was passed by, by the president, well, the ex-pro temp, Mr. Perotto. So we are, California's landscape as to where it's getting its electrons is changing dramatically. We're not going to be getting coal-fired power plant, electrons from out of the state. We are going to be dramatically changing the way electrons work. We're going to be getting a lot more power from Tehachapi. Tehachapi is the Saudi Arabia of wind. There is enough wind power in Tehachapi to service 10% of the entire load of the state of California, which is about 60,000 megawatts. There's about 6,000 megawatts of power there. So you probably can see that there's a new transmission line that's been recently- So you probably can see that there's a new transmission line that's been recently constructed by Southern California Edison. If you drive up to Tehachapi, there's some great places to go to lunch up there. You can see huge turbines laying on the ground, getting ready to put up. So the existing infrastructure of fossil fuel fire power plants will actually have to diminish in order for the utilities to meet their 33% RPS, which means that they will have to take plants offline. So we sued the South Coast Air Quality Management District because they, in our opinion, which the court agreed with, had this scheme to create emission reduction credits and then essentially sell them for many hundreds of millions of dollars to these 11 power plants. And essentially, we intercepted that activity, said that they had to comply with other laws, and that's all sort of like in process. Everyone's grappling with that. But none of those plants can be built right now because there are no emission reduction credits available. This particular plant was one of two plants that was going to receive those emission reduction credits even though they're not in the South Coast Basin, because we get transported air pollution from South Coast. Those credits are no longer available. My understanding must be that there's not enough credits here in this basin, and so they're trying to negotiate with the San Joaquin Basin, which is, you know, as you know, pretty far away, to try to get emission reductions credits from there. There is a rule in San Joaquin that says that they will not transmit emission reduction credits unless, outside their basin, unless it's within 15 miles of their boundary. This plant is not within 15 miles of their boundary. So the important, I think, you know, as a policymaker here in the city of Lancaster, there's a couple of important things to recognize about this plant. You've clearly all gotten a picture that it is a very large industrial facility, and it's going to have emissions, and it's going to cause visual blight. There's no question about that. But the reason that we are involved is because we are very concerned about public health. This basin is in non-attainment for particulate matter, and I believe for ozone. It's going to be in non-attainment for PM 2.5. And it's the PM 2.5 that is especially concerning to us because it is what causes mortality in the basin. Right now, you will not have to do a PM 2.5 plan for another couple of years, but when you do, you're going to have to try to find ways to reduce PM 2.5. This particular plant will be the largest source of PM 2.5 in the basin if built. About 95% of the PM that comes out of that plant is PM 2.5. A strand of my hair is about 10 microns. So a quarter of the strand of my hair of the diameter is what PM 2.5 is. It's the particulates that when you breathe them in, you cannot exhale them. So for anybody that has any kind of respiratory condition, asthma, emphysema, if you have chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, if you have any kinds of heart problems, these kinds of pollutants have a huge effect on your health. And without actual emission reductions here in this basin, it becomes not only a public health problem, it becomes an economic problem. If you think about air pollution as being almost like money, there's a finite amount of it. If you want to bring new industries in here and you've already given all your emission reduction credits away, no new industries can come in because you can't emit air pollution in the basin. And that's just the construction of the Federal Clean Air Act. So efforts on behalf of local air districts and state legislatures to try to change how this whole Federal Clean Air Act is being implemented are being not upheld by the courts because really only Congress can change that. And so the Antelope Valley, because it is in non-attainment with these air pollutants, it's going to have an attainment problem with PM 2.5, we're going to have to grapple with both the economic impact of having restrictions on the kinds of industries and the kinds of activities we can have in the Antelope Valley, as well as the public health impacts of the pollution. And what you're seeing here is you being at the apex of that. The city of Palmdale wants to build this plant and sell it. It's a merchant plant. You cannot subsidize power. That power is going to get loaded on the grid just like every other kilowatt hour, and it gets sold at what it gets sold at, okay? Unless Palmdale wants to go through a very lengthy and very protracted and very expensive process to become a public utility, or unless the city of Lancaster does, that's going to be the way it is, okay? So there's no benefit to the citizens of the Antelope Valley from some sort of kilowatt-hour break on their power. And this gets at the very, to sort of sum up where we are, it just gets at the very heart of many environmental issues, and that is who benefits and who bears the burden? In this case, the city of Palmdale, this is a money-making operation for them. If they get the plant permitted, if they get a power purchase agreement, they can sell the plant, or they can keep the plant and keep the revenue from the plant. The city of Palmdale and the rest of the residents in the Antelope Valley that will be affected by the emissions will not get any benefit from that. And that's really at the heart of this. Where's the burden and where's the benefit? If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'd be happy to come back and give you, you know, a much greater... I was at a public hearing this morning in Los Angeles. I don't really have a fancy PowerPoint presentation, but if you want me to create something that shows, you know, the volatility of the price of natural gas, you know, where we are with meeting our 33% renewable portfolio strategy, there's a recent report that was released that said we're going to have to take many plants offline. It's very difficult for us to understand why there's 25 new proposed power plants in California that are all fossil fuel when we're going to have to take plants offline to meet an RPS goal. It's this sort of whole thing with energy is really a rapidly moving ball.
Any questions?
Can you talk about the PM 10 over the limits of the standards?
Right. We currently are, we're not in attainment with ozone and with PM 10. That's also a really big problem with all of these power plant proposals is that they propose to trade PM 10 ERCs for really what is PM 2.5 ERCs. What comes out of these plants is actually not PM 10, right? It's PM 2.5, a much more dangerous type of air pollutant. And I'm not sure where the Antelope Valley Air Pollution Control District is in their state implementation plan, but my understanding must be if they're trying to get ERCs from outside the basin, that we don't have enough ERCs either for PM 10 or ozone for this particular plant, or they'd be getting them here in this basin. Does that answer your question? Yeah. The PM 2.5 is an extremely dangerous criteria pollutant. I mean, it is, I cannot underestimate to you or underscore to you, and I'd be happy to come back or give a presentation to city staff about PM 10. The California Air Resources Board has done extensive studies on PM 2.5 and PM 10 and have a lot of public health information. They're really a public health problem.
Are you able to estimate the mortality rate from a plant like this?
There have been studies done on PM 10 and PM 2.5. Let me just give you the flavor of one study, okay, and how this works from a public health In Utah, there was a steel mill that shut down because of a union strike for six months a number of years ago. Steel mills are huge PM 10 and huge PM 2.5 sources. And there was a series of, a bunch of epidemiologists that went in and did a series of studies there. And what they showed was a dramatic drop in mortality from things like chronic obstructive pulmonary disease and emphysema and other types of respiratory diseases. That study was done almost 20 years ago. Since that time, there's been a number of epidemiological studies that looked at, that was one source, okay, just one source, in a town, you know, in an area, I believe it was near Provo, Utah, so something that looks sort of similar to the Antelope Valley, you know, 100,000 or so people, a couple hundred thousand people, and this dramatic reduction in PM 10 and PM 2.5 is a source. The other thing that we see is when PM 2.5 or PM 10 rises in the inland empire, you can literally see people walk into the hospital, right? You see them walk into the emergency rooms with asthma attacks and emphysema attacks and heart attacks. And you can actually see that those, you know, a certain percentage of those people will die. Now, it's very clear that the folks that are most at risk from particulate matter pollution as well as ozone as well are in hot summer days, which we have a lot of. Because of the heat, pollution tends to get trapped, and obviously, you're going to see, you know, both our young people and our elders are going to be most at risk. These are what they call sensitive subpopulations. So that's also, you know, very concerning. As you know, the eastern part of Lancaster, I mean, yes, the eastern part of Lancaster has actually a different demographic than the rest of Lancaster. There's a lot of young families, housing costs are very reasonable. So, you know, we have a really large population of young kids that are going to be right underneath that plume. So that's obviously very concerning to us. As well, one other thing...
Is that going to increase the asthma rate?
They don't know if asthma is caused by air pollution or it is triggered by air pollution. There's a lot of research going on right now at the USC Institute there for Children's Environmental Health Studies, trying to sort out. But what we do know is that we see a distinct rise in respiratory illnesses, both in the elderly and in the very young, when you have rising levels of ozone in PM 10 and PM 2.5.
In their permitting process, did they, was any of this taken into consideration? And what I mean, any of this, you know, Antelope Valley has the highest mortality rate in the county for a multitude of diseases, and certainly the highest rate of mortality for respiratory diseases. Was that taken into account during the permitting process, the impact it was going to have? And what you're telling me is this is going to kill some of those people. Is that right?
I mean, I am not stepping outside my bounds or outside the bounds of science to say that this plant will be the source of deaths, right, in the Antelope Valley.
So why aren't we saying that this plant is going to kill people in Lancaster?
Well, you certainly, I don't know any of the epidemiologists that have worked on air pollution or any of the folks that are working on any of the effects of air pollution on children, that they would not say that. Let me give you an example. This plant is about 570 megawatts. There was a plant that was proposed for Vernon, California, that was about 800, close to 900 megawatts. And they estimated that the death rate, okay, for that plant would be 12 deaths a year. Now, that was, and by the standards, the epidemiological standards, many epidemiologists thought a huge underestimate. Now, that's just the mortality rate, not the morbidity rate, not the number of people that will have heart attacks or have, you know, emphysema or have existing respiratory problems exacerbated. I mean, I think that the evidence and the state of the record, the state of the science on PM 2.5 and PM 10 is actually very clear to us now. And so, you know, basins that are in non-attainment with the standards, that's why they have to purchase pollution offsets, so that there's not an actual increase in pollution in the basin. But when you're purchasing offsets or trying to get offsets from 100 miles away, what that means is you essentially, public policy allows the pollution to be stranded in that air basin. And that is definitely going to increase the, you know, make sure that the air pollution, the national ambient equality standards, those levels rise, they don't go down.
They build this plant in Palmdale. Is that going to prevent us from building, manufacturing, uh, plants in Lancaster because the pollution credits are going to be used up?
That's exactly right. That's what I'm trying to allude to before, is that there's a limited number of pollution credits, okay? And you literally, you know, I know I might sound like I'm a lawyer and epidemiologist, but I'm actually an economist.
I like lawyers, it's okay.
Okay. I'm actually an economist, and if you're being totally rational, you would try to ra, you would try to say, "We want the most jobs for every pound of pollution released." And what you're getting here is, you know, 45 jobs for a huge amount of pollution. I mean, you get the construction jobs for a couple of years, which I think is, you know, obviously a great benefit. But if you're going to construct something and you're going to employ people, this, in this particular area especially, this is not a good use of that. You know, 45 people to run this plant to produce the same amount of megawatt hours, you'd employ eight to 10 times as many people if you were doing solar or wind. And there's a number of wonderful studies that have just been released in the last 18 months on, you know, the fact that renewable energy creates more jobs and better jobs, living wage jobs and trade jobs, right, which are all the types of jobs that we could use here. And, you know, I hadn't thought about the use of water, although my grandfather was on the Antelope Valley East Current Water Agency for many, many years. But, you know, the same thing with water, we have a finite amount of water. Your point about how are we best going to use that water? And if the Antelope Valley really, we are so close to the load center, we have unlimited resources for energy. Everyone is looking to come here to build solar facilities and to expand wind generation. I mean, it only makes sense that we would maximize, right, both our water and our land and these very precious emission reduction credits.
Does this have the potential of jeopardizing the BYD project?
Based on what was just said, if there's a limited amount of pollution credits, I would say yes, or any manufacturing project. I'd have to obviously look at the number of pollution credits and what the finite number is, but on first blush, yes.
And we haven't looked at any of that, have we?
Not, no, we as a staff have not.
So what can Lancaster do to stop this project?
The Energy Commission has a process that they're in the middle of. They have only disapproved very few power plants. Their whole reason for existence is to approve power plants. It's very important to understand that. There are some actions that you could take, you could intervene in the CEC licensing process. You could intervene in some of the lawsuits that are keeping these emission reduction credits from being allowed to sort of exit different areas. You could certainly talk to Senator Renner. Senator Renner and I have spoken on many occasions about...
Yeah, him and I'll be talking real soon.
Power plants? Well, he tells me you guys want the power plant, so I'm not sure sometimes that he understands it.
I'll call him tonight and tell him that's...
Well, I'm saying that, you know, there is, there's, you can have the power plant, but there's an opportunity cost to that, right?
Sure.
Because then you can't have these other things. And right now, since there really is a lack of emission reduction credits, I'm quite frankly puzzled as to why the city of Palmdale keeps putting more millions and millions of dollars into this permitting process. So one of the problems with this whole energy infrastructure has been a lack of oversight on behalf of both California Air Resources Board and the United States Environmental Protection Agency on how these ERCs are created. Are they actually real, or are they a piece of paper? So that's something that we have been very, very involved with both Jared Blumenfeld, who is the new regional administrator, Region 9 US EPA, and Chairman Mary Nichols, who's the chairman of the California Air Resources Board. I visit with Ms. Nichols often. She understands very well our position on these phony credits and how they don't really result in emissions reductions and public health improvements. So there's actually a number of opportunities ongoing that you could weigh into, and I'd be happy to get with the city manager and kind of let him know without taking up all the time for your meeting tonight. I feel like I've spoken a great deal.
I would like the city manager, the city attorney, to meet with you at their earliest convenience and formulate a plan that you can present to us to vote on, and we will either vote to try to stop this or not. But I would, rather than just vote tonight about, "Let's try to stop this," I want to see a plan that we can implement and put it before the council whether or not we want to, you know, build power plants or we want to build factories. All right?
Yeah. Yes. I mean, I just fail to see the benefit to Lancaster until somebody can tell me the benefit. I don't even see the benefit to Palmdale. I mean... I'm having a hard time with that, too. I mean, you know, you have uniquely, you are, I express frustration to the Energy Commission and to the Pro Tem, and I haven't expressed it yet to the new speaker, but why are we building solar plants hundreds of miles away from the load center when we have all this fallow land, which Mr. Talbot has sat on the Dust Busters Committee, and we've tried to get the dust from all this fallow ag land, you know, to stop impacting the air pollution in the Antelope Valley? That's the perfect place to build solar. The transmission line goes right through the middle of it. The on-ramp, you know, to the grid is right here, and, you know, why are we going out in the middle of, you know, critical habitat for the endangered tortoise on top of Native American sacred sites, hundreds of miles where you transmit power and it loses, you know, electrons as it's transmitted? And it just, you know, talking to the Energy Commission would be good. I know that they, we asked them to do a study of old ag lands that were within a certain radius of load centers. And I know, I understand that they have that study completed, and, you know, it'd be great if the city of Lancaster could ask to see that and get involved in some of these issues.
You're uniquely situated for that because of all of the alfalfa fields we had.
You're uniquely situated because you have transmission line, you have the Acton substation, you have more sand than you know what to do with, and you have fallow lands. So...
I agree.
You have, you know, a perfect storm of, you know, to become basically the renewable energy center for Southern California.
Somebody called it the alternative energy capital of the world.
Well, you are the Saudi Arabia of wind and solar. Well, you are the Saudi Arabia of wind and solar, and you are very close to the load center. And so, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to put a, you know, a fossil fuel firepower plant in the middle of that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the invitation, Mr. Christ. I'm happy to come back whenever you need me to, and I will so much look forward to spending time with Ralph Sun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, as staff brings back the information and stuff for us to look at, and the plan that you requested. You know, while both speakers were very articulate and informative, I think they're both on the opposite poles, and might have their own viewpoint because of their beliefs. I'd like to see if there's any other independent information on some of the information the mayor wanted, so that we can make a viable decision.
Can we hear from the manager of the, he's here, Brett Banks?
I, well, we're not going to make a decision tonight, I mean...
I understand that, but it's in everyone's mind right now, about what's saying, I want to hear what's true and what's not.
Well, can we say it as what, the difference of opinion?
Okay, that's what I alluded to.
Mr. Banks, are you prepared to do that tonight, or would you like to do it another time?
Whenever you're ready. I can do it now, or...
Why don't, why don't we take a break? We've been at this for two and a half hours, let's take a 10-minute break, and then, I'd like to hear from you. Thank you. Back on, where'd Mr. Banks go?
Right here.
Aren't you glad I gave you some time to prepare?
You bet. Yes, sir, how can I help?
Well, Mr. Smith wanted to know who's lying.
That was, that was Mr. Christ.
Okay.
I just wanted a, an unbiased opinion.
Well, I don't know, ours is unbiased either. I mean, we just have rules that we follow, and have to issue a permit based on what state rules and requirements are, and that's what our agency has done. If I can ask, you know, answer any specific questions about that, I can do that, but that's essentially our role.
Well, I mean, the last speaker, the last speaker brought up the, the idea that there's, there's not going to be able to build the power plant in the first place, because there's no credits. I mean, we're going through all this, it's moot anyway. But, I mean, what, what is the status of credits for a power plant like this?
The Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District does not have sufficient credits in their jurisdiction to be able to permit this power plant. They'd have to be transferred from an area that impacts our area with transport pollution. And those two areas have been defined, the Los Angeles Air Basin, and the San Joaquin Air Basin. And they both impact our local area with their transport pollution. That's why state law allows for the transfer of those credits. So, it's not a one-for-one transfer. If you have a ton of pollution that you're trying to offset in the Antelope Valley, and you're using credits from outside your area, there's a 30% increase in that. So, you're actually going to take 1.3 tons of air pollution that would be in San Joaquin, transported into the Antelope Valley, take that out with those emission reduction credits, to be able to permit your one ton of emissions in the Antelope Valley.
Doesn't the San Joaquin have like a 15-mile rule, or something like that, that, yeah, the...
I'm not familiar with that, and that's something that our staff will take into...
I mean, I was hearing, somebody was talking about that, that they have, it will sell you the credits, but it has to be within a certain distance from the border of the...
That's something that we'll take a look at, but current state law allows for the transport of those credits, but from an air district that's impacted from transport.
So as we sit here now, the power plant doesn't have enough, can't purchase enough credits?
Locally, they cannot, that's correct.
If, if this power plant's built, could it seriously impact our ability to bring in manufacturing?
I don't know. I mean, it may, but what I think, there's sufficient credits to be able to do those, both operations, I think. Through the transfer, again, there's nothing locally, and that's the difficulty that we have with our current situation. The whole process is to take existing sources of pollution out, reduce those amount of credits, and allow new sources to come in. So you're actually benefiting an area when you're, you're reducing the current manufacturing capacity, right? You're taking out a source, you're reducing some of those credits that are allowed back into the market, and then can use those for new sources. Does that make sense?
Well, help me out here.
Okay.
I mean, say this is the number of pollution credits that are available. Are we full? Have we used them all up?
In our area, there weren't any to begin with, because we didn't have existing sources that were taken out of service.
I see.
That's, that's the only way they're created.
I see, okay.
The way that, here's a good example.
So, we're typically to, to maintain a stasis, right? That we don't increase the pollution loads statewide?
Correct, right.
All right, actually, what we're attempting to do is reduce it by 0.3.
Exactly.
Okay.
Right. That's the way Lockheed and Northrop were able to construct their facilities. They closed existing facilities in the basin, transferred some of those credits, and were allowed to use those credits to create what they have here.
So is it essentially unlimited? How many ti, how often we do that, or...
Well, it's based on credits, and also some of the restrictions that we have here locally, based on the amount of pollution that we can... Ms. Williams brought up that we are out of attainment for ozone. That's more commonly the smog that you see, right? So there are certain thresholds that, when you cross that, that's when you need those credits. That's bigger sources of emissions, manufacturing plants, those kind of things.
Well, you mean if we buy enough credits, we could turn the air black?
No, because there's certain thresholds that you can't increase above.
And that's what I'm asking you. So that threshold is the container, right?
Yes.
How full is it?
Our carrying capacity, if that's what you want to use as a term, in the desert, still is, there's a pretty high potential there.
Mayor Perez, can I, I wanted to follow up on that, if I might. The question that I wanted to answer, ask was similar, is that if you get these from San Joaquin Valley, I understand that they impact our air, so the theory is, if you're getting them from there, they're reducing their impact on our air. Is there a limit that they have to, to, could you do 10 of these power plants? Does San Joaquin Valley have enough capacity to do 10 of these power plants, or 10 huge manufacturing plants, or whatever?
For their entire basin, there is a large amount of credits. The amount of credits that could be transferred in this area are going to be restricted by some of the things that Ms. Williams mentioned, distance and things like that. So there may be some restrictions based on that.
I'm, I'm getting the sense that the answer to your question is, you don't know whether or not they're going to be able to build this.
The current power plant projects? That's correct. I mean, that's still a question, are sufficient number of credits going to be able to be transferred to allow that to happen?
The, the other question I have is, is, is she accurate, that this is going to kill people in Lancaster?
I, I'm not going to answer it as a yes or a no. I can tell you that what we are required to do is risk analysis based on what the emissions from that plant are. And some of the facts of that are, that there's a certain amount of risk that the state rules allow, and that was calculated into issuing the permit. And the other thing is, that the, the plant is required to use best available control technology before it's even constructed. So those are the two points that we were involved in.
What's so hard about the question? I mean, is there a way of determining? One, will this kill a certain number of people a year? And two, how many people is this plant going to kill in the city of Lancaster? Is that question answerable? Is it, is it a relevant question? I mean, I'm pretty good at knowing when people are lawyering things up, and it's sounding to me like you guys are lawyering this up.
No, I, I'm not trying to do that, but that, we have not, I mean, in that, to answer that exact question, I, I can't give you that answer. I, that calculation has not been done.
Is it possible to do that calculation?
I don't think so.
Is, is she correct, that it is reasonable to expect that people are going to die as a result of this, if it's built?
I, I don't think so. I, I don't have that exact result to be able to tell you that.
Well, is, is this, what is it, PM-2?
PM-10 and PM-2.5, that's what she's talking about. Particulate matter less than 10 microns, particulate matter less than 2.5.
Okay, really small particulate matter, right?
Yes, sir.
Does that kill people?
It, yes, sir, it has adverse health effects in it.
Why do, why do we shy away from the, the reality of it? I mean, I just don't understand that. I mean, what, what is, what is so hard about saying it the way it is? That we, we expect a certain number of people will die as a result of this plant? And if we don't know the answer to that, what are we doing to find out? Because I think the citizens of Lancaster have a right to know, how many of them are going to die, so they can build this plant in the neighboring city? If any.
I think what there is, is there's a, there's a calculation that goes forward with the risk that this plant puts to the surrounding population. That has been done. It, does it measure the exact number of people that may die as a result of that? Not, not in those terms.
Because it's uncomfortable, right?
Possibly, yes, sir.
Well, I'd like to be uncomfortable and know the answer. How do we go about finding the answer?
Give me some time to look into it.
I mean, because we're talking about, we're talking about real grandparents.
Right.
Real parents, real children, right?
Yes.
With respiratory illnesses that will die as a result. I, I, I think it's incumbent upon us to know. I mean, we should know, and we should say, okay, we're going to sacrifice this many people, in order that this plant that is going to give 45 jobs can be built. Because I don't see any other benefit. Do you?
To the power plant?
Yeah.
I, that's not my position. I mean, my position is to follow state law, and issue a permit if they meet all the requirements.
Well, I, I think somebody ought to make the calculation, and say, this is the benefit, this is the cost.
Okay, I can give you some data to help you make that assessment, or staff, but I can't make that...
Mr. Neal?
You're going to be busy. Well, yeah, we've, I have already signed a couple of people, Robert doesn't know, but he's one of them. And the, what we can do with that data is, we can make reasonable calculations on that and other information.
And I'd like the, I'd like the medical community to get involved in this. I mean, I, I would like to hear from Dr. Shaw, from the oncology people. I want to hear from the cardiovascular people. What, what is this really going to do? If anything? But, you know, right now, we're dancing, and we're, and we're playing this, this game of charades, that, that I'm very uncomfortable with, and I hope everybody else is, too. I know that you're not building the plant, Mr. Banks, and I'm sorry for...
And to be fair to Brett, the local, which you're in charge of, the AQMD, doesn't have jurisdiction on this, correct?
We issue a, a permit, and in, in our opinion, that this meets the, the state requirements, and then the CEC actually takes our recommendation and issues the final permit for construction and operation.
And that's based on, because it's over 50 megawatts?
That's correct, that's right.
I'm good.
My, my understanding is, we have a, a seriously high rate of asthma for the county. Is that something you guys get involved in?
On the periphery, yes.
I mean, we've got a disproportionate number of children with, with asthma.
Right.
And, you know, asthma to a lot of people is, is a word, until they see that, that child not able to breathe, literally gasping for, for air. And what I'm hearing is that this is going to put more of those children into those episodes, right?
Again, I, I can't say that for sure.
Okay. It's 2010, we ought to be able to say for sure.
I know.
All right, thank you, Mr. Banks. Anybody else? Mr. Zink, and then Mr. Talbot.
Just about the land, you're saying like, the distance, I think the property you were pointing at was the city of LA owns that, and this one, that they purchased, was owned by a division of Lockheed Martin. Actually, they, that was a proposed business park of theirs. I really, it comes down to it, it's, you know, I've been proposing this for 20 years, as an Antelope Valley Community Service District, to take everything, overlook of everything, take in AVAC, take in flood control, take in a utility district for the whole entire Antelope Valley. Here we are, and there's so many unanswered questions, and like I said, 2010, we should have answers. But it's because we fight each other. You guys talk about having a sister city in China, or a sister city in Mexico, Palmdale does. Your sister's Palmdale. You're Palmdale's sister. We need to come together. If this area is really going to truly grow and prosper, the leaders have to come together and form an Antelope Valley Community Service District. You could also appoint, hey, is a BYD manufacturing plant, if they move here, is that going to kill people? Are they going to pollute air? So, I mean, it's a lot of nonsense, I think, but it's true, maybe we could, it would use all the credits up. But this is something we need to look at regionally, and just think what we could do. We could actually bring, this power plant's $1 billion. You're a day star, what's that, another maybe a billion? That's more money than LA County spent in, in the Antelope Valley, and the whole history of LA County is a couple billion dollars. So, probably, no? You don't think so? But this is, all happens within 10 years, our lifetime. So, that's, that's the only comment I made. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Talbot? Remember when you were the only voice in the wilderness about this power plant?
Yes, I do. Decap mission is to keep the issue before the public. I've said that for 35 years, and we're doing pretty well. Mr. Wilson wrote a great article after the air quality meeting last week. And from that, I kind of cobbled together a quote by Sarah Head, who was the Vice President, and she was the speaker for the power plant. And here's a quote from her, "This plant will be a major source of ozone in the Antelope "It all started about January 11th, when I came to see you about bringing this issue up in the mayoral campaign, and you talked me into running for mayor, and I don't regret it." Thank you.
We've got a long ways to go. Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Okay, do I have a consensus that what we've instructed the city manager to do, we should proceed with? Okay, thank you. And with all due haste, you know, what I hate to do is see this thing up...
We're going to, we're going to put, I'm sorry, we're going to put the item on the July 13th agenda, we should have most, if not everything, but whatever we have, we're going to put on the 13th. We can certainly have a plan, and a lot of these questions answered, and invite the proper people to also be there, too. So we will schedule it for the 13th of July.
You know, maybe we should have an Antelope Valley-wide vote. Maybe there's a way to do that. Or maybe we should talk to the supervisor. I mean, let the people decide if they want this. Just a thought. Okay, where are we at?
I just have one. I want to personally thank the Jethawks for making their stadium avail, the stadium available before their game last Sunday. For the Challenger Division, that's for if little league mentally and developmentally challenged children, at a game between Rosamont and Quartzel Little Leagues, and it was one of the, I'm a huge baseball fan, it was one of the most inspiring things I've ever seen. The Jethawks were so moved that three of them came out and worked with the kids, their players, without being asked. The crowd cheered, and the kids had their pictures up, and the video of their game before the real game. So, the Jethawks were a great community partner, they did all that for free. Our Parks and Rec staff donated their time to be out there as well early, and it was truly an amazing thing. We're going to do it every year.
Didn't we have some community involvement, as far as businesses?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you for reminding me. Walmart stepped up and had gifts for all of the children. Yes, they did. Walmart steps up quite often. And I do have one more, I'm sorry, sir. Councilwoman Marcus asked for some pictures of the boulevard, and we'll put those up during the rest of the meeting. There were no pictures taken of me riding the bike as you requested, so those have all been destroyed.
Staff really needs to follow direction better. So what's the deal on Bob Dylan? Is he coming to Jethawks, or is he coming to the Fairgrounds?
As of right now, it appears that... As of right now, it appears that Mr. Dylan is not coming to the Antelope Valley.
Well, I thought we had him contracted.
That is not the case.
Okay, thank you.
There will be.
You gotta admit, that's pretty cool. I mean, that is way cool.
We're gonna be sending these to the Valley Press in the hopes they'll publish them.
Mr. Wilson, will you put our pictures of the boulevard in the paper? Okay. Moving on. Speaker cards? I guess I go to the city clerk, don't I?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the redevelopment agency and the city council about items that are non-agendised. You'll find speaker cards on the table at the back of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill the cards out completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the council, the city manager, or city staff can get in touch with you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you start to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see three lights. The green light comes on when you begin. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left. And the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Deborah Hess.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to make an announcement tonight that on June 30th, Southern California Edison's gonna hold that small business workshop. It'll be over at our offices. The address, there's 42060, 10th Street West. And we've sent out flyers to the city last week, as well as you have a copy tonight. We've contacted the Chamber of Commerce. So, if you have nothing to do that morning, we welcome you out. It starts at 7:30. That's it. Any questions?
7:30 in the morning?
I know. 7:30 to 8:00 will be registration. We'll have coffee, donuts, muffins, and then it'll start at 8 o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did publicize that as well in our Lancaster E-News.
Richard Mesny?
Mayor and council members, two years ago, you came up with, tow companies have to have licenses. Now, I'm on the outskirts of the city. I have no problem with buying a license, but the paperwork is more than when you buy a house, which you have to fill out. It's ridiculous, the amount of paperwork that you have to fill out for the license. Now, as I'm on the outskirts, I have an LA County license to do work in LA County. Wouldn't that supersede the city license?
Well, I don't know if it would supersede it, but it certainly should cut down on the amount of paperwork you have to do.
No, the answer is it does not supersede it. The county license deals in the unincorporated areas, and our license deals with tow truck operations within the boundaries of the city of Lancaster.
But what about the paperwork? I thought we were making this paperless.
It's... I think there are a couple of additional items that our ordinance requires. If the council would like to modify the requirements for somebody to get the license, we can certainly look into that. But our ordinance is pretty specific as to what has to be submitted.
There are documents that are required to be submitted in addition to... And part of it is the county certification. What you're speaking of the paperless is the development process, which we've done.
Yeah, but why can't we do that for business licenses also? Just do it on the internet?
Well, we can. We just did the development process first. We're working on that now, too.
Fair enough. What I'd like to see is, I'd like to see all the requirements, and then maybe we should revisit this. Okay? I mean, let's just take a look at it and see. All right?
And can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Are the roads, they're federal, correct? I mean, when the semis and other companies come in and make the deliveries, they don't all have to have licenses on all their vehicles, unlike UPS, FedEx?
That's correct.
None of them do, but tow companies do. And I'm wondering, you know, that's...
My understanding, and perhaps the city manager can help me with this, it's the fact that you're actually doing business in the city. There's transactions taking place in the city. Now, there is some preemption for UPS and DHL and companies like that, except for when they have a facility within the city itself, then they have to be licensed. But believe me, if we could make them all have to buy licenses, we would.
The other part of it is that we have specific statutes that apply to cabs and tow truck operations, simply because of the consumer protection aspects associated with those operations. And so, that's why those particular requirements were developed in the first place.
Including... I'm not saying that they're not required. I just want to take a look at them.
Right, including criminal background checks.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Zink?
One of the things questioned was the carports that are all being approved up here for the solar panels. And I'm thinking, are those carports going to be made here locally? Is there any way that we can put some resource together? Maybe Dell's Hitching Post, and we got the Trust Yard over there on Division, and we could start manufacturing these carports and selling them nationally, and create some local jobs here, and put all the carports up in all the schools and the cities. That was just an idea.
Well, I think we are using local contractors, right?
We are using local contractors, and we're gonna have an announcement, which we discussed with the mayor just today, in a matter of a few weeks, dealing with that subject.
The manufacturing?
Yeah, you're gonna be happy.
Okay, cool. All right. The other thing I came to hear is for a... I want to see a bond measure on the November ballot for parks. And it's called the Lancaster Parks Health Student Safety and Jobs Reinvestment Bond Act of November 2010. This is a perfect time to propose this for this community. We need more parks and recreation. We need sidewalks for students going to school. I think it's an outrage that we don't have... Provide safety for students walking into the college and elementary schools and parks for our students, especially when we have lawsuits like the one from Dick Baikman, who's gonna be suing the city for holes in sidewalks and stuff. And I want this bond measure to... Hopefully, you guys can solve that issue. And it won't cost the city millions of dollars. But this act would require by the law that the city be required to provide students with paved and accessible access within two miles of all public schools and colleges, along with majors, secondary, and local streets, and along with other safety improvements such as crosswalks and signage. It must be in compliance within one year of passing this act. It would fund several new and existing recreational projects, fix several eyesores and blights throughout the city, and create more recreational opportunities for citizens. It would help in finding widespread obesity problems, and help people to live healthier, more active lives. It would promote more people into walking and bike riding from homework, school, shopping, recreational leisure activities. It would help in reducing air pollution. It would help to prevent community from becoming blighted, and help create and increase property values, and make the city more attractive to keep and retain companies here, and be more attractive for companies to relocate here to bring more jobs and economic growth. It would create hundreds of high-quality construction jobs and related jobs, and help stabilize the local economy. It would take advantage of the depressed real estate market by purchasing rights aways in future parkland, saving taxpayers and city millions of dollars to be used for constructions of parks and acquisition of property. It would raise... I just put a figure, $75 million from the city issuing bonds. Interest rates are historically low. We could probably get a guarantee from the federal government. And this is a time to do it, and this would create local jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zink.
There's also a youth program and another thing I'm proposing.
Thank you. Bobby in...
Ina Maroc.
Yeah.
Mayor, Council, there's a juvenile probation school on, I believe it's Division and K right there. It's a middle school. I don't know if you're familiar on Division, as you go south on Division.
I'm not familiar.
Well, it's a juvenile probation school, and I pass by there every day, and I see juveniles just hanging outside.
Oh, you mean it's a charter school?
No, it's a probation school for juveniles.
Is he talking about the new building over there?
No, I believe he's referring to a... I don't know if they call it a community day school, or something of that type, that's operated out of an industrial building that's on the west side of Division, I believe, down about K4.
By AQMD?
Yes, by K4. That's correct. Yes.
It's been there for quite a while, actually.
Well, they house juveniles on probation there. I pass by there every day to work, and I don't see any cross signs, any school things, nothing there. And I'm just wondering why not.
Well, I'm wondering why they're putting schools in industrial areas that don't have crosswalks. I mean, how is that an appropriate use?
I think that what has happened in this particular case is that a number of years ago, the community day school through... I forget which organization. They have a system through the state that they purchase and acquire site or lease site for these types of facilities. And essentially, what they are are for... They're almost kind of last-chance type schools.
Yeah, but I'd kind of like them to have a last chance and not get run over because they're in the wrong place.
Well, that's a traffic control issue that we can certainly look at with any use, you know, any use that creates traffic, whether it's kids or not. That's what traffic control does. So, we'll look at that issue.
I just think they should be afforded the same safety as a public high school.
Agreed.
And also, I just want to make a comment on the plant. I've heard a lot of... Tonight, I've heard just a lot of opinionated and biases.
Yeah, I'm biased against it. Make no mistake.
I just would love to see empirical evidence on the issues. That's it.
Empirical evidence, or would it be...
On the pollution of the plants.
I don't know that it's empirical evidence we want. It's... Oh, well.
Well, just evidence.
No, I agree. I agree.
And not personal biases.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Vienna Friss?
I'm Vienna Friss. I live at 44602 Beach Avenue, Lancaster. I'm one of those asthmatics, so I appreciate your attitude toward the air. I've lived here since 1947, and I'm living under fear now that my 1927 house is being condemned by Lancaster Code Enforcement and LA County Health Department. I've been working with Mr. Winky for the past six months, and I thought I was satisfying his demands. But he's gone to the LA County Health Department, Environmental Control, and they're condemning my house for a 6x8 area in the back of my house, where I have some things preserved. I've been here since 1947, and I love this area. I worked at FAA with a secret crypto clearance, so I'm a good citizen. And I live down on beach, and I'm trying to preserve the area there. I live among drugies and criminals, and I have four pets, and my dogs cheer people up, and I speak to everyone. And I've never caused any trouble with police. And I really care about the area. I pick up trash and put it in my own trash, and I really patrol the streets and really help speak to everybody and the homeless. And I recycle. I'm trying to be a good person down there on beach. But the city and the county, which is after me, I'm living in fear that I'll lose my house. I have until July 9th to clean it up. It's only a 6x8 area. I have a 1952 Gafferson Sattler stove I want to keep and put in my house. So, I really preserve my antiques and things. And I have fir wood floors in the house, and I'm really enjoying it. But I really wanted the city to know about this situation.
If I have Natalia, she's in the back of the room, get ahold of you, I mean, see her before you leave, and we will send some college kids over to help you clean that up, okay?
Okay.
And will you let them clean it up and work with them in doing that?
Oh, yes.
Natalia, would you take care of that this week? Okay, be sure to talk to Natalia, and we'll fix that for you, okay?
I wonder if someone would talk to the LA County. They scare me, so...
They don't scare me. I'll talk to them.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Okay, but let's clean it up first, and then I'll talk to them.
Oh, yes. I'm painting and everything, so...
Okay, great. Thanks.
...of my little house. I want it preserved as a landmark. I wondered if you preserved our adobe houses that were here.
You know, that city manager, you just turn your back on them for two minutes.
That's our heritage. I've seen them since I was...
Okay, be sure to talk to Natalia, okay? Be sure to talk to Natalia. She's in the back of the room.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this.
David Aber?
Evening, council, staff, and citizens. I want to start by commending Mr. Talbot. Wasn't one word mentioned about this power plant for a long time. I know he and I have discussed it on at least 30, 40 occasions. And I noticed the way you, since you didn't bring the 10,000 jobs here, you tried to. You used the plant as an excuse for not bringing them. You didn't bring one job here that you promised, but that doesn't surprise me, and you never will.
It's been a month, for heaven's sakes.
You didn't bring one job here. You promised 10,000. You dodged debates during the election. You didn't bring one job here. I was really glad to see that we had a 3-2 vote. I was really surprised to see that little bit of diversity. But moving right along, we've got some serious problems facing us. Number one, Walmart lawsuit. We're gonna get beat up on that. Allied Arts, we're gonna lose that one, too. The two water lawsuits, I'm gonna have to do my homework on those, so I won't comment. So, we may not lose those. I was sitting at home a little earlier and joining the meeting here, and heard Councilman Smith mention something about 90 days down the road on the alcohol ordinance. I think there's gonna be a trial about the election about August, so long before 90 days, we might have some changes. I'm really upset that some of the candidates ran on the fact that they were gonna keep the money here because we were a charter city. When in fact, we just paid out 17 million. And then, I understand, if I heard correctly a couple meetings ago, that we're gonna waste $3 million more on a frivolous lawsuit. I believe that statement was made by the city manager. You know, maybe we're at the point where a recall would be good, four of you, and not Mr. Chris. Thanks for Mr. Chris, because he's raised more questions in the past three or four meetings than the rest of you have raised in quite some time, you know, the whole time you've been here. You know, it's really sad that, you know, I myself am, you know, considering filing two lawsuits also, so we'll be up to about nine or 10. I wonder where we're gonna get this money. But it was really a nice try to try to play off the water, the, excuse me, the power plant in Palmdale for your excuse for not bringing the jobs here. So, it's time that the council quit talking out of both sides of their mouth, all except for Mr. Chris. Thank you.
Mr. Pelka, let's see you top that.
Well, on June 8th, as you know, two weeks ago, I came over to the city hall and submitted a list of Brown Act complaints to the city council for a meeting that took place on May 11th. Now, there's a memo of a Brown Act violations that were committed by the council. Now, there's a minimum of eight Brown Act violations that were committed by the council on that evening, and I say minimum of eight because you could really go into, and the people that were, their rights were violated by not being able to comment on certain issues and things like that, could easily accommodate quite a few more. So, unlike the last time I got up here and spoke, earlier tonight, where, Mr. Paris, you failed, or you refused to make a comment about what I had to say, this you have to answer. I expect a response within 16 days, which was 30 days past of when it was initially filed, and that's required by law, so I just thought you'd like to know that, and if it's not adequately responded to, to not only my satisfaction, but the district attorney and the attorney general, well, you know, we'll see what happens.
Shall we vote? Did he top that?
He should get it.
No, I didn't think so either. Okay, moving on. Council reports.
We have sanitation district. Since I've been on, we're trying to work on getting a larger equitable allocation of recycled water for the city of Lancaster, and some other stuff that we're working on. I had a special thing put on for tomorrow for Daystar Farms, because we have a little bit of a legal difference opinion between Mr. McEwen and myself, and the council that's been hired by the district, on whether or not Daystar Farms can go forward with the municipal use. So, I'll give you an update after we get done with the meeting.
Thank you. What inequity are you talking about?
Oh, the city of Palmdale gets allocated about approximately 9,000 acre feet per year, and we get 900. So, just trying to make it equitable, since District 14, we produce about 75 to 80% of the recycled water, and we don't get that much.
You going to fix that?
I'm working on it.
Are you going to help him?
Oh, yeah.
He's got a good plan.
How do we get into these things? 9,000, 900, something tells me it's out of balance. How does this happen?
When county was involved.
It's a long and ugly story, but we have leverage now.
Any council reports other than that? No action on the Lancaster Financing Authority, no closed session, so we won't be violating more Brown Acts. Did you look into the Brown Act issue on the?
Yes.
Is there anything to be concerned about?
During the response to it.
Anything to be concerned about?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'd like to wish everyone a happy 4th of July. We hope to see you out at the fairgrounds. It's going to be the best event we've ever done on 4th of July. Get there early, we're going to have the rodeo, we're going to have the fireworks. Maybe the fireworks will actually go off this year. We've got great hopes for that. The vice mayor will undoubtedly lose the potato race again, and-
We are appointing a potato inspector, and it will not be Shenanou.
We are all for using Shenanou like that. Oh, I hope that's not actionable.
We are all for the inspector, the vice mayor and I.
Okay, we'll just have to see what happens. We are adjourned until July 13th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM. Carol, my day is done, I'm coming home, and I hope you have something to eat.